Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission meeting this, excuse me, September 3rd. I want to thank you all for being here today. We have a number of items to address and like to get started as soon as my computer behaves here. Okay, so, yeah, yeah, no problem. Okay, we're just going to go through some preliminary things. So we have the communications from the Budget Advisory Board. This was a recommendation, motion made by Bill Brown. Here's the Commissioner. We just started, John. Seconded by Mr. Patel, that we move forward with sending the proposed budget to the Commission as developed by the City Manager, and it passed unanimously. So we had our workshop last time, and thank you, Bill, for being here today. And I believe we got through all the issues, so I guess we're, the Commission's ready to move forward. And this afternoon at 5:00, we'll have our first budget meeting, and we'll be starting to vote on items on the budget. So, anyone have any questions with regard to that?
Mayor, not in regards to that, but the lights are really, like, pointing in my direction today.
Well, you're in the spotlight.
If I would have known, I would have brought my shades, but that's, we can get an adjustment.
All right, so they, they, they transferred light from there to there because I was complaining about there, but that is very bright. If you could just dim that a little bit.
We have that here, too.
Oh, that just got turned on. All right. If you could just dim that a little bit.
Thank you.
I remember during, I don't want to date myself, but I remember during the Watergate hearings, the Senator from Hawaii, they were, you know, there was so many press there that they had lights all over the place, so he wore sunglasses. And, and he looked like a gangster with the sunglasses on.
That Danielle Inoue?
Yeah, it was Inoue, yeah, exactly. Very good. Your mommy and daddy let you stay up late.
I'm just as old as you are. Thank you.
No, you're older, but that's okay.
Just a few months.
Anyway, moving on to our neighbor presentations. So today we have Teresa Santos, who'd like to discuss the administrative variance process. Want to step up, please, right over here to the, to the podium? At the bottom of the microphone, there's a button to turn on the microphone. If you pull the mic down to your left, to your height. Yep, perfect.
Bring this down?
Yeah, welcome.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Teresa Santos, and I'm here with my husband, Peter Schulman. We're both retired pediatricians with really no experience in governance matters. The decision to come here today was not easy, but ultimately was based on my experience with the Process Improvement Committee in our medical practice. Several months ago, a permit request for two sliding gates in our residence was denied. Mr. Bert Ford explained to me that the only process available to get a deviation from the Unified Land Development Regulations was to make an application to the Board of Adjustments. I reviewed the process and realized the complexity, time, and cost involved. Going through the entire process could easily add to somewhere between $2,000 and $4,000, and the project had no guarantee of success. Somehow, this just didn't seem fair to homeowners, with the city of Fort Lauderdale managing variance requests from well-connected and well-financed developers building major projects in the same way as for homeowners requesting reasonable deviations from the literal terms of the ULDR. So there began the process improvement search. Question one I asked, are there any communities that have successfully established a process which permits minor changes of code requirements? The answer is that many other cities have, in fact, established an administrative variance process for special circumstances where the strict application of the ordinance would result in unnecessary or undue hardship. This administrative process does not require a change in the zoning law. Instead, it provides a specific waiver of requirements of the zoning ordinance. So question number two, understanding that there is precedent for an administrative variance process, the next question was whether this process had been previously considered by the city of Fort Lauderdale. It appears that on two occasions, the Board of Adjustment had requested to the City Commission the allowance, the allowance of minor staff variances, and that both requests were denied. So question number three, when were these requests made, and why were they denied? Well, I found one discussion on July 2019. The City Commission considered a communication from the Board of Adjustment Committee. The committee had unanimously requested that, I quote, "The City Commission consider instituting an administrative variance process in which staff can approve their minimalist requests based on a percentage calculation or based upon some other standard used by other communities that have adopted an administrative process." The discussion that ensued was very brief. Mayor Trantales was reassured by two committee members that the board, quote, "usually rules in favor of the homeowner," that a good balance existed and that the system worked. The request by the Board of Adjustments was thus denied. So this brings me to the last question. If the board is going to usually rule in favor of the homeowner, why would the city of Fort Lauderdale want to put residents through such onerous, time-consuming, stressful, and expensive process? Why not listen to our Board of Adjustment, the people most knowledgeable and experienced in the subject, and adopt a well-established approach that doesn't lock out homeowners who do not have the money, time, and resources to successfully navigate the only variance process in place right now? So I come to you today with the hope that the always progressive city of Fort Lauderdale leadership will reconsider the administrative variance process request made so long ago. From my perspective, the institution of such a process would be a definite process improvement and a win-win outcome for the residents of Fort Lauderdale, the Board of Adjustment, and the City Commission. I would like to end by thanking everyone in the zoning department for their professionalism, patience, and responsiveness to the residents of the city of Fort Lauderdale and the City Commission for allowing me to share my thoughts. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you so much for being here today. And I'm going to ask Chris Cooper, if you could come up and comment on this application, and exactly what is the, do you know the history of what, of what the, the problem is?
So I don't know the exact history with, with this case that was discussed. I think there was a hearing before the Board of Adjustment that was denied for whatever reason. But as she said, we have, we have looked at this in the past. I think the biggest question that comes up each time is where do you draw that line? You know, there's certain dimensional standards and requirements in the ULDR, and, you know, does that allow for some staff-level discretion? You know, what's the appetite, and what's the limit that the Commission would be okay with allowing the staff to make those decisions rather than the Board of Adjustment? So those are all things that we've considered in the past, and if asked to, we could consider again and bring back something for you to, to look at if you're interested in going down that road.
Mrs. Santos, can you come up here just for a second again?
Chris, Ms. Mayor, if I could ask you.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Chris, could you do me a favor for people that don't understand the process that she, that was delineated? Could you just, for the people in the audience, how that goes?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
So the city has a Unified Land Development Code, which determines the zoning and uses for all the properties in the city. It also contains a number of dimensional requirements and standards for the development of land in the city of Fort Lauderdale. There's a process through our Board of Adjustment called a variance process, where if somebody wants to deviate from those requirements, whether it's a setback, or height, or, or some other dimensional standard, that they can make that request to the Board of Adjustment. And if there's a hardship, there's some criteria listed in the code of why those can be granted. And if, if one of those exists, and the board feels it's warranted, they can grant the variance for somebody to deviate from our land development regulations.
Once that's adjudicated, there's no recourse after that, correct?
So there is an appeal process through Circuit Court. If somebody's on either the prevailing side, and there's an affected party that wants to challenge the decision, or if the person is denied, if they want to take the, take the request to that next level through an appeal, they can do that as well.
But no legislative recourse with us?
No.
Okay.
Mayor, if I might.
Wait, wait, one second. I just wanted, Mrs. Santos, could you just repeat for me what exactly you were looking to seek a variance for? You have to talk into the microphone.
Yes. I, I no longer speak on behalf of my situation. I'm speaking on behalf of the city of Fort Lauderdale residents.
I understand, but I would just, could you tell me what your situation was?
There was, there is, I just wanted to put sliding gates, and they said that the fence, the, the wall that's there now is grandfathered in, and therefore, in order for me to put that fence, I have to put it three feet behind the present wall, which makes no sense. I, I'm not even interested in doing it anymore because I can't do that.
I understand, but I just wanted to know what it was that you were seeking, and why you felt that the process was burdensome, because I wanted to know exactly what the, what the petition was for. So, so we're basically saying that wanting, that, that particular description that you just, you just repeated to us was what you were seeking to have accomplished, and that the, that the process itself is burdensome upon yourself and other people who have minor, who have minor interests in, in seeing the variance from the ULDR, and that we should seek to incorporate some sort of intermediary petition right that doesn't require all the things that you know that cost a lot of money to have, to take place.
Yeah, I, I believe that if we go back to what the Board of Adjustment requested, some sort of, some sort of discretion that they can use, and that you can define it by looking at the many communities. There's so many communities, cities and counties that have used this, their administrative variance. If maybe we can learn something from them, I'm not sure. I, I'm not knowledgeable enough to tell you what to use, but I would rely on the Board of Adjustment Committee to give the recommendation and see if there's things that can be done. Because the, the process itself, it starts at $2,300, but if you want to get revision, or, or, there's another $500, and there's another $900. So the, the process itself is, is not only cumbersome, it's terribly expensive.
I understand, okay. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this reminds me of a situation, and I want to thank you first of all for bringing this to our attention. This is not the first time that I have heard this, but this reminds me of a situation that we had in District 2, and I, that's why I would encourage Chris to pursue this. But years ago, we realized that much of the process for the folks living in historic Sailboat Bend, which is our only residential historic district in the city, it was very cumbersome for them to always have to go to the Historic Preservation Board for every little thing, exactly what you're saying in terms of the process and how onerous it is for the homeowner. And we were able to figure this out. We were able to get to a point where we have administrative review and administrative handling of issues that did meet a certain threshold where we felt they could take care of that. So Chris is very well aware of that. Staff is very well aware of that, and I think it's a perfect example. It's a perfect template for us to follow, because it was the exact same situation where the owners of those properties in Sailboat Bend were having that same difficulty. So I think we can get there, and I would love to see staff come back to the Commission with ways to deal with this, because it does make sense. Thank you.
So I think we can. I, I think we can bring you back something to consider. I will say the difference between the certificate of appropriateness and the variance is that the certificate of appropriateness is required to do improvements to a home in Sailboat Bend that somebody wants to do. The variance is if somebody wants to deviate from the, from the regulations that the city's established through their zoning code. So it's a little bit different in how you get to that point. One's sort of a, you need to do something. One's sort of, you want to deviate from something. We also-
But the process is what I'm focusing on.
The process is similar, and, and I will also say the Commission approved a reduced variance request fee for homesteaded properties as well. So that fee is, I think, around $680. So there were some thought given to making it a little bit easier and a little less expensive for somebody to request a variance if they're homesteaded.
I think we also, when we went through some of the reworking of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, weren't we also able to reduce some of the fees as well on some of the issues?
So for residential properties, we don't charge a fee for a certificate of appropriateness application. But again, I think that's because that was a requirement upon the homeowner to go through that process, being in a historic district or a landmark, where it's a little bit different from a variance request, in that that's more of a, if somebody wants to do something, wants to deviate, then we, we give them a path to do that. So it's not a requirement that they do that. It's just if they want to deviate, they have to follow that process. So it's a little bit different.
Regardless, I think we can get there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll bring something back.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
In regards to these requests, how often or how many do we see in a, in a year's time?
Oh, gosh. Several. I mean, we have a meeting once a month, and, and there's always a relatively full agenda. I mean, if I guessed, I would say four, four more cases. They could be for things that are existing, as in this case, where there was an existing wall, and they needed a deviation because of the want to improve that existing condition. There's cases where somebody wants to do something, and they come before the fact with plans and ask for that deviation to do something they want to do. So it's, it's sort of a mix of why they get to the Board of Adjustment and how they get to the Board of Adjustment.
And a lot of people don't even bother after they, they're told what the process is and the cost. So they don't even, they don't even try to do anything, and they just sort of live with what they have. Or they do it anyway without the permit. So let's not kid ourselves.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Being the oldest person on the dais, to you, as Steve has mentioned, you want to give us a little historical perspective of we've looked at this process in the past, since you've been here?
Not, I mean, we, it's been asked of us, as Mr. Santos told us back in 2019. And at that time, staff did not indicate that anyone really complained about the burden of it. They just complained about the necessity. And so, but, but it's clear that the burden, the expense is, is, it seems crazy to have to go spend that kind of money for something simple, right? So, so there's got to be a way to streamline the process, and I think the Vice Mayor has spoke, spoke to that point. And I think if the Commission can agree to that, then I think we should give direction to city staff to see if we can come up with a more streamlined and less expensive approach to trying to deal with these, these minor things that deviate from the, from the ULDR. All right.
I've always thought of the city of Fort Lauderdale as being very progressive. So other smaller cities can do it. I think we can- So if other smaller cities can do it, I think we can do it as well.
I think we can too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, CF One Quarterly Investment Report for the period ending June 30th, 2024. Hello, Linda.
Hello. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I am here today to present to you the Quarterly Investment Report for a quarter ending in June 2024. It is a good news story as it was with the last quarter where we had positive returns in our investments. Year-to-date, we've earned about $24 million in investment earnings, about 3.6, 3.6 million of that is general funds money, as earnings to the general fund. With me today, I brought Richard Pangeli. He is our investment advisor and he'll give you some updates on how the quarter for September 30th is going to run out. But before we move on to him, one of the things I was asked to present to you today is just to talk about the pension board funds, especially GERS. At their last meeting, they wanted me to let you guys know how well their fund has been doing. And so through the research and the information they provided us in Exhibit Five, they wanted me to let you guys know overall, in the past 30 years, they've earned about $929 million in investment earnings in the last 30 years, and they just thought it was important for you to know that, to see how fun, how well their investments are doing. Additionally, I just wanted to also provide that same information for the Police and Fire Pension Fund, and they've earned in the last 30 years about $1.2 billion in investment earnings. Okay? So I'll turn it over to Richard if you don't have any other questions.
Wait, wait, that sounds interesting, but what's the principle? I mean, what percent of, you know, a billion dollars, sounds like a lot of money, but if we invested 10 billion, it's just, it's.
Right, well, we've earned 1, 1.2 billion over what we put in, the exact amount we put in, other than, I think we put 140 million into the pension funds for that one back in 2012.
Right.
But when you look at what was provided, so just net flows itself, don't have the beginning started. So it started from zero and their fund right now is 1.2 billion in earnings and the net market value right now is 1.1. So this includes 67 million in payments that they've made out. So looking at the report, they've paid out more than we've given in. So majority of it is earnings, if you look at their report. But I can get that information for you the next time.
So it's a solvent fund?
It is.
And we're able to keep up with our obligations?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, hold on one second, I'll turn it over to Richard to give you the market update.
So Mayor, while we're waiting for Richard, the general rule of thumb in pensions is that about 85% of the total value of the fund comes from investment earnings. So the employees contribute, as you recall, the employer contributes, but really the bulk of the portfolio in all public pension funds is made up of investment earnings and that's true with us as well.
And so with that being said, the investment earning portion of that has, has been able to keep up with expectations, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, good afternoon, everyone. So.
Did you bring a suitcase full of cash with you?
It sounded like there's one here already, so. So, you know, I'll, I'll really just focus on, on the outlook from here. Performance continues to be good in the portfolios and, you know, my, my discussion is focused on the operating funds. We went through the period of rising interest rates where we were essentially going from near zero interest rates up to the current levels of 5% interest rate levels and we've been steady here going back into last year. Where we are now, the Fed has clearly signaled that they're ready to lower interest rates. The market is currently projecting that those 5% levels will be down by about 1% by the end of the year. There are three more Fed meetings remaining, so that would mean that at one of the meetings, they'd probably lower interest rates by 0.5% and then a quarter point maybe at the other, other two meetings. At this point, the market expects in their meeting in two weeks in September, that it's almost 100% certain they're lowering interest rates. The question is if, is it going to be 0.25% or 0.5%? Whatever the case is, all of the expectations are that we're going to have lower interest rates going into 2025 from where we are here. The past couple of years, the Fed has been highly focused, laser sharp focus on lowering inflation, which that has been the case, inflation has come down. It's not at their target as yet, but it's trending that way and it's very close there if you look at sort of monthly instantaneous numbers and kind of how you measure that looking in, in the rearview mirror. The most recent unemployment number ticked up a little higher than the Fed was expecting, so they've shifted or indicated that they're shifting their focus to really take into account the second part of their mandate beyond just keeping stable prices, which is maintaining full employment. And they're going to be looking to balance these two as we go forward from here. So, you know, the likelihood of lower rates is, is, is high at this point. When we think about investment strategy for the funds, that's how we are positioning things. We've taken the longer term portfolio right in line with its benchmark in terms of duration so that to the extent interest rates start declining, as they have in this current quarter that we're in, that, that will increase the market value in the portfolio and sort of protect the, the returns. We're also working with staff to make sure that funds that can be invested out longer along the curve, a year out, two years out, et cetera, are being invested in anticipation of this longer, or sorry, this declining interest rate environment that we're moving into.
Okay, anyone have any questions? There being none, thank you so much. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
So Mayor, I do want to use this opportunity to bring up something that's been a, a point of discussion for probably all the years I've been here. So we've had ongoing conversations through the years about actively managed versus passively managed funds. The academic literature all points to the fact that passively managed index funds that are low cost, low fee will outperform any actively managed funds. It's, there is absolutely nothing in the peer reviewed academic literature that supports any other investment strategy but that. And so years ago, when we established the OPEB Trust Fund, we did it as a way of using it as a pilot project, if you will, to, to further that. And so if you look at the performance of our OPEB Trust Fund relative to the Cemetery Trust Fund, for example, you can see that we've outperformed both on the quarter, the fiscal year-to-date, and the trailing 12 months. And I think it's time for us to perhaps consider adjusting the Cemetery Trust Fund's investment policy to mirror that of our OPEB funds. I mean, candidly, I'd love to see the, the pension plans do that as well, but they've got their own team of trustees that drives how they make investment decisions. But the Cemetery Trust Fund is, is within the city's purview to, you know, advise the trustees of that as to a, a better method of investing. And so I'd like to have a conversation about that, not today, but perhaps a presentation going forward where we can discuss this because when you look at a $30 million trust fund, if we have, you know, if you look at the year-to-date, the difference is 16% versus 6%. That's a 10% difference. That's $3 million this year alone that the Cemetery Trust Fund has missed the opportunity to earn. And I think we need to adopt best practices in the financial investment and advisory arena so that we're not missing out on opportunities. Thank you.
Okay.
Note taken.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other questions? There being none, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to CF Two. This is an emergency purchase, structural repairs for the City Hall parking garage. Who would like to speak to that? Ben?
Or Mayor, I can.
Oh, you can.
It was just notifying the commission that we did authorize an emergency purchase. There were some repairs that needed to be made in the short term. There are also longer term repairs and as, and for those, we will go through the, the customary procurement processes.
Charlie, Charlie King is asked to speak. While he's going up to the podium, were these life threatening or structural, what's the word I'm thinking of? Were they, would they, were they compromising the integrity of the structure?
There was nothing that would have required us to close, close the garage when we received the report, but the report did have recommendations that certain repairs needed to be made within a six-month period, needed to be made by October.
Okay. Mr. Kane?
At the last meeting, Commissioner Herbst wanted to turn the parking garage into a homeless car shelter or something like that. And I just wouldn't want you guys to spend any money on electrical outlets, showers, toilets, or whatever other emergency, you know, sort of things you might need to put on that roof. Just, I would look into what is actually being done because I, he, he seems dead set on this and I think it's just, I don't understand it. We're, we're trying to move homeless people out of our downtown, not concentrate them in our downtown. I've looked for his name on the property rolls around here. I, I don't know that he owns any property here. I didn't see it. So I feel like he doesn't have much skin in the game here with the rest of us have our quality of life, our property value, the safety of our families, just the aesthetics of our city on the line. And I feel like he's here because he won an election after he got fired by this commission and it's just sort of a revenge thing or something. And then after he's done, he's just going to retire to some other part of Florida. So I care and I want this problem handled outside of downtown, not inside of downtown, where Commissioner Herbst has the same idea too, where he, you guys are massaging the county commission to put all the homeless people here. It's just, it's just so crazy and I'd like to call you out on it, so please respond.
Happy to do so, Charlie. So I have owned property in Fort Lauderdale for a decade and a half. In fact, I owned property down a block from your house in Vic Park for many years. In fact, at one point, I owned three townhouses in the area. I own a condo, it's homesteaded, you can find it when you go look for it because my address is confidential and exempt under state law. So I do own property there. Now, as to parking lots, it's an option. It's an option that Commissioner Sturman investigated out in California, brought back, suggested it as something that we could do quickly at virtually no cost to the city so that we can begin complying with the state law that takes effect shortly. It seems to me that we have an obligation as a commission to find a way to comply with state law. So I guess my question to you is, when we are no longer allowed to have people camp on public property and they can sue us, residents and businesses, if we don't do something about it, we have to do something about it. What's your suggestion?
Wait, 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 this is.
No, no, I'm asking a question, Mayor. I, he asked me a question, I'm asking a question. I'd like to know, I mean, this is a gen, a genuine conversation.
But this is not the forum, this is not a debate.
It's not a debate, I'm, I'm asking a genuine question. We have to do something and I, and I want to know what, what your suggestion is.
At the last meeting, you and Warren Sturman sounded like, like junior executives at like Holiday Inn trying to get more people in your hotel to this failing.
No, 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 Charlie, I ask you a simple question. What do we do on October 2nd?
Life, liberty and the pursuit of.
Charlie, what do we do on October 2nd?
There's, that we have to house people? Where's it say that?
We have, so what the law says is that when somebody complains about somebody sleeping on private property, the city has to remove them and do something with them. Now, we have two options, okay? Number one, we take them to the sheriff, who by the way, if you read the newspaper today, says he's not taking them into jail. Okay? Did, did you read that?
Yes, I read it.
Hold on, stop, let me finish.
But I.
So the sheriff's not taking them, so we have to take them somewhere.
The sheriff is the sheriff because the previous sheriff was removed by the governor. If he wants to go in the newspaper and say he doesn't enforce certain laws that he doesn't like, especially one the governor just signed, he's probably maybe not going to be here forever.
That may well be, but in the meantime, we can be sued, we, the city can be sued by individuals and businesses if we don't remove those people who are camping on public property. So what do we do with them, Charlie?
So you think the middle of our downtown is the place.
No, no, I'm, no, don't keep, don't ask me a question, I'm asking you a question.
City Hall is the middle of our downtown.
Where do you want them?
I don't know, unincorporated Broward? Maybe in your district.
You want me to pick them up, throw them in the car?
Maybe a warehouse district in your district.
Hold on, hold on, wait, you want me to put them in a bus and drive them to somebody else's city and drop them there? That's. Bring them to Pompano and kick them out of the car? No, we don't do that, sir.
No, no, I, I, I think people are getting moved all over this county and they're winding up here for some reason.
I agree.
And I, I don't think it's just the hospital and it's not just the jail, it's, it's, it's our, all of our nonprofits we have that all have their world headquarters all up and down.
You still haven't offered up a solution, Charlie. What's your solution?
The solution? I, I'm saying you should build one of these things, but not in the middle of our downtown, that's so stupid. Protect our downtown, protect Los Olas and protect our beach. That's what makes us different than Pompano or Deerfield or these other places.
So where do you want to put them? Where do you want to put them, Charlie? Vic Park?
Unincorporated.
Do you want to put them in Vic Park?
You know, unincorporated Broward.
Should we put them over there?
I know that you're always trying to get us to annex unincorporated Broward. Why don't you annex it for this purpose?
No, 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 Mayor, I'm tired of people that are criticizing us when we try and come up with. No, I've listened to you for 15 years and all you do is no, 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 and you never once have an answer on anything. Thank you.
If you want to like join hips with Warren Sturman, who's going to lose his election, you should go ahead and say you agree with everything Warren thinks. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions of Susan with regard to the repairs for the parking garage?
And Mayor, I just want to add that any of the repairs had no bathrooms or showers or any of those electrical outlet type things. These were structural repairs.
Also, just to bring this conversation to further context, I believe the, the, I'm trying to think of her name, she just left my head. The, the, the staff person associated with the Affordable Housing Project, Affordable Housing Board.
Dr. McGores.
What's her first name?
Rebecca.
No, 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 no.
Rachel Williams.
Affordable Housing.
Rachel?
Mavis.
Mavis.
Mavis, Mavis, Mavis. Mavis wrote us all an email telling us that we must be living under a rock if we think that the parking garages are suitable for, for anything because the elevators don't work and she went on and on and, but anyway, it's, it's, it's obviously a complex issue and obviously there are going to be a lot of opinions on this. So anyway, let's move forward because I think we're talking about two different parking garages anyway, correct? Yeah. All right, business one, Lockhart Park update. Who will be giving that presentation? Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, Carl Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. I will give a second here for the presentation to load. Okay. So as you recall, in April earlier this year, we brought forth AECOM, our program manager to provide an update where we were at our 60% plans. During that period, we discussed various options that you all provided in direction at that time. And your direction was to move forward with 100% designs, which we are in the middle of right now. And so as such, we have moved forward and we have took some of those comments and instructions and come back to you today to provide an update, just to make sure that we are heading in the right direction as well as seek any additional feedback before we get to the point of no return.
Point of no return.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to share that part. So as such, the, part of that conversation included scaling the building down so that we could take appropriate action as it pertains to Echos and being able to host meetings without that being an issue. So as part of that, we.
Echos, echoes from where?
Inside the building, inside the community center. Like, so if we host a meeting, to be able to have a meeting without it being that echo that you hear.
Oh, you're trying to do the acoustics within the structure?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes. Also, we were asked to include some historic preservation into the project where we talked about the stadium and some of the meetings that we have there. And so we took that into consideration and is included into this as well. We were also asked to enlarge the dog park area. This includes the small and large dog parks of the facility. And as such, now we are in the process of moving forward. Right now, as you see here, it says FAA approval, but as of this morning, we did receive it.
We did.
We did. And so we are ready to move forward. I've spoken with AECOM this morning as well. And so we're moving forward with that, onto our DRC approval. And in early 2025, we're looking to do and move forward into our permitting and dry runs as well as bidding and then hopefully into construction with a complete project completed in 2026.
Yes.
Questions?
I have a question. Can we go back to the site plan?
Yes, sir.
I may have asked this question before and you probably answered it, but I don't recall the answer, so I'm going to ask it again. You see the parking lot? So because of the issues in regard to parking for the stadium, as well as the associated uses like the football field and all the other uses of that site, remember we had talked about maybe moving the parking lot, like shifting the parking lot closer to the stadium, closer to the practice fields, closer to the football field, you know, right along that perimeter? And thereby being able to use that parking should we need it for stadium use? What was your response at that time?
Actually, Mayor, I can address that.
What was that?
Sure. So we had extensive conversations with AECOM. So that area that you see right over there, so there's going to be drainage under those multipurpose fields, which then runs down to the lower right-hand corner. So there's two issues. The first is drainage. That's one of the primary ones. That's where all the drainage for that entire site is going to go. The second is, and this is more philosophical, so right now we've got children playing over there on what's an interior part of the park. Whereas that park down there where you see that parking, that's on a major thoroughfare. That's an industrial area over there. And so they strongly recommend moving children to the safest part of the park, which is on the interior. I don't want children playing down there adjacent to an industrial zone with tractor trailers going up and down the street all day long, every day. So those are the two things that are kind of working on it. Again, safety of the children and the fact that that's currently set up to provide all the drainage on that site down to that corner.
Well, John, you see where the pickleball courts are?
I do.
Why couldn't we put the parking there?
Because that area where the pickleball courts are is part of that drainage field that goes down to that lower right-hand corner. It all drains, so that area where the multipurpose fields are on the upper right-hand corner is all draining down to that field.
That would detract from the drainage process that you described.
The drainage, so what the team had asked for was putting the parking where the multipurpose fields are. And as I said, that's kind of a non-starter from our drainage perspective. That whole area is providing drainage for that park.
Okay.
And again, like I said, but the larger philosophical issue, Mayor, is that I don't want children playing on 12th Avenue.
Which is 12th Avenue?
Where the current surface parking is set up right now. That's the industrial zone.
Isn't that part of the stadium?
No, no, no. So if you go, so what you're looking at is you're looking at Commercial Boulevard on the left side, going up and down.
Correct.
You've got...
And what frames it on the right side?
The street that's between the park site and all the factories and industrial areas just south of that street. So that's all industrial south of there. So if you're looking on the bottom, where AECOM is on the bottom of the road, that's all factories.
Well, I understand that, but I'm not looking there.
Okay.
I'm looking on page three of the backup. Where I'm looking is in the, on the upper part of the site that's...
Can we get to page three, folks? So everybody can see what he's talking about?
Yes. Go to the previous page, please. So you're looking at the bottom part, 12th Avenue, which I'm not speaking about. I'm talking about moving the parking over where the pickleball courts are and then moving the pickleball courts where the parking is. But you're saying that, you're saying that that's an inappropriate place for pickleball courts?
So if you look on the, if you look on the lower right-hand side there on this V, right? So if you look on the right-hand side of the V where you've got the trees and you see the parking immediately behind that, the pickleball courts are all the way over there in the right, that blue section, they go into the stadium. Okay? If you look, so look to the right on that bottom right-hand corner. What do you see? It's all factories. That's all factories. That is a major industrial thoroughfare right there. I don't want to move those playing fields over adjacent to an industrial corridor.
We're just talking about the pickleball courts.
No, because it can't be the pickleball courts by itself because like I said, Mayor, that area is part of the drainage. That pickleball court is not going to be large enough to accommodate all that parking that you see there. And what, and candidly, what the team has asked for...
So it's the size that's not...
It's the size? Well, it's a lot of things. What the team has asked for is all of that. They want the multipurpose fields, the playing fields, and the drainage center on the lower right-hand side. They want one-third of the park to be used for parking.
No, I don't agree with that.
I'm just telling you, this is what they've been asking for for the last year and a half.
Okay, so...
They want 700 parking spaces because they failed to build enough parking spaces when they came up with a parking reduction from 4,900 spaces down to 900.
Right. So what I was, what I was asking is, is there an opportunity to at least put some measure of parking closer to the stadium? Because, you know, we have the football field, we have the practice fields. You know, it's not just about the soccer stadium. It's about all the uses of that site that will ultimately, you know, require additional parking. So...
So there's plenty of parking on site. There's 900 spaces on site for when we have the high school football games there. So we don't have a parking shortage when the high school football games are being played. That's not a problem. The only time we have a parking shortage is when Inter Miami is playing their games.
Okay. Okay, just a question. All right. It looks good though, Carl.
Thanks, sir.
Anyone else have any questions of Carl?
I do. Thanks, Carl. So on page seven of 10, I just want to get some clarification. When you say Office of Historic Preservation, are you talking about history Fort Lauderdale? You're talking about our staff? You're talking about county? Who are you talking about there?
So we reached out to the Historical Society that we have here. And that's where we got the information from that we used to get some of the pictures that we'll incorporate into the design.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that. I think we maybe even want to reach out to also, I think the county has a lot of information on the site from the County Historic Preservation Board. But I'm happy to hear that because that is something I've been asking for because this is a very historic site. And a lot has happened there with regards to our city. So I appreciate that. And then Mayor, I just want to talk about on page nine of 10 because it says under 2025, start construction. So let's talk about this. I believe that we've given Inter Miami the ability to park through this December, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Just curious, what's happening after December with regards to parking and Inter Miami on this site? I firmly believe that we do need parking for the 2025 season. My personal opinion is that it will be, is last season with the team. I don't even think he'll make it to Miami. God knows when that stadium will ever get built. And I do think though that we have to consider this. I don't want to see us all of a sudden in a panic mode and their agreement for parking on this site is gone when December arrives and we haven't thought about that. But I think we have to have that discussion. I don't know how we can do construction at the same time as we're also dealing with probably the last season that Inter Miami will be playing in Fort Lauderdale.
I see Ben up there and I don't know if Ben wants to add to that conversation as far as... He just was stretching his legs.
Is that Ben? Oh, the bearded man. I didn't recognize him.
While we contemplate that, let's also remember that if we delay the construction of this park, construction costs are going up an average of 10 to 15% a year. So if we delay this by another year to accommodate the team, we have to think about who's going to cover those cost overruns related to, you know, runaway inflation and construction.
Okay.
Well, I think we owe it to the community to be building our park. So I'm supportive of moving forward with the schedule. I would like to find ways to assist the team in finding parking solutions, which is why I brought up the discussion I did earlier. But I'd hate to, you know, I hate to pause once again with regard to the completion of this park. And I think, I think there's an opportunity here because what we're looking at in 2025, it says start construction. But is that January? Is it June? Is it November? I mean, there's no indication as to when that is. And I understand our permitting department is kind of slow. No, I'm just kidding.
No, you're not.
So we recently touched base with AECOM, our program manager, and they advised us that January would be the design package for us to get ready to put out to bid. And so we're thinking from that period of time. We, of course, bring it back for, to review, staff complete into our N4 systems. And of course, we have our legal review, risk review as such. Then we have the evaluation review. And then of course, it'll come back to commission for approval and then execute a contract. And so we're looking at, at the earliest from where we are now is summer. But we are working towards moving the project as soon as we can to see if we can cut some corners. I'll be working with Ben in the city manager's office to see if we can reduce the timeline.
Mr. Santos, you thought you had problems. The city can't even get out of its own way. Okay. So we're looking at the summer then perhaps to start construction?
Yeah, I think you probably have a window somewhere between April as a starting point for construction to probably August or September. It just depends on the procurement process, association, you have the holidays in there. But we are striving to try to get there April, May for some kind of earth movement.
So you just said August, September of 2025.
That's correct.
The season ends when? November of the year? I'm not sure. I think November.
October.
Okay. So we're talking October. So we're talking a close timeline here. But I just still, and what you just said reinforces my belief that we need to address this sooner rather than later. Because if you're saying that maybe, you know, and I don't want to say that I'm not optimistic about that timeline, but I think we might be optimistic about that timeline. So...
Why don't we cross that bridge when we come to it?
Well, Mayor, may I finish? May I just finish? I don't want us getting closer and closer and closer to December and then it's a rushed conversation. I want to begin this conversation. It's an important conversation to have and it just shouldn't wait till the very last moment. I just think we have to have a conversation. And we can certainly go a little bit in-depth with the conversation, but I just wanted to bring it up because right now we see next steps that say start construction in 2025. I don't want to mislead the residents. I don't want to mislead the public. I don't want to mislead the team. I want to make sure that we all are able to discuss this in a, you know, in a way that makes sense and we just figure out where we're going, that's all. And what are we doing when the parking expires in a few short months? What are we doing?
Good questions. Okay.
To add to the conversation, just putting it out here, I don't know how feasible, but just to have a conversation about it. Recalling that at one point at Commercial Boulevard and Andrews Avenue, there was a parking, some type of a parking lot there. Let's have a discussion about how we maybe can utilize that. The Miami, what is it, Intercom? What's the name of the...
Inter Miami.
Thank you, Inter Miami. They pay us for spots anyway, right?
Correct.
So if there's an outside entity, I'm not sure who owns that property, maybe that's a direction that they can go in to secure.
Well, we own everything.
All right, if we own that?
We own it, but they are, they are under a license for use for 50 years.
For the parking lot that I'm referring to?
Everything.
Okay.
Mayor, just a point of clarification. I think what Commissioner Beasley Pittman is talking about is the FDOT parking ride. It's a commercial on Andrews.
FDOT parking.
I didn't, that's why I asked who owns it. That wasn't the first question.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay.
And is there a conversation that could be had with that facility? I don't know how many spaces, but that would add to...
It's a good point.
Opportunity for parking. And there could be opportunity for shelter, for sheltering for, from that spot to the next spot.
So to answer both you and Vice Mayor Glassman at the same time, every year when the season ends, we meet with Inter Miami a couple of times. We go through parking options in the neighborhood. Last year, we had a heavy focus on the Tri-Rail station right there on Power Line and met with Tri-Rail a few times about alternative parking locations. Around that time is when we also started negotiations for the South parcel and the FXC parcel if we're moving forth those two as well. So it's usually in January. And to your point, it usually does have a very confined timeframe for us to get that from start to finish.
And where are we on the impasse with Inter Miami and the discussions with those outstanding issues?
I'd have to defer to the city attorney or Commissioner Herbst.
Nothing new to report. Still impasse. That was two weeks ago.
So once impasse is declared two weeks ago, what are the next steps legally?
One thing is you could decide maybe you want to go to court. I don't know if you wanted to consider that at this point, but that's one way to move things along. You want to get paid for this park. It's going to be a very thorny issue to deal with legally in court for a variety of reasons. I'd want to talk to you one-on-one about those things rather than disclose strategy, but that would be the next step. Otherwise, negotiating with the people for the parking, as you're pointing out. And I think you're correct about the life of this stadium with Mr. Messi is, looks to be limited.
Tom, is pre-suit litigation appropriate to call for a closed-door session? It's not. It has to be already in suit.
It has to be filed and existing, yes.
Okay.
So Mayor, I'll add a couple of things to this. So several points have been made that I think are interesting. First is to Commissioner Beasley Pittman's point. In fact, the use of these alternative sites that she and Ben were just discussing were actually what was contemplated when Inter Miami came to the city a number of years ago with their request for a parking reduction. They had identified all these sites as parking ride sites. The other one that they talked about was potentially using Cypress Creek Station. As you know, that's a vast parking lot. That's an underutilized asset right now. The stores in there don't necessarily generate the traffic necessary for all that parking that you see over there as well as other businesses in the area that they were approaching. They just haven't done that because they haven't need to, candidly, because of the fact that they've had the availability of the city's lots at a very, very inexpensive price. So I think they have, they absolutely have the ability to go and find alternative locations within the neighborhood. They had identified all that with their consultants at the time. I think it was Keith and Schnars. Keith was their parking consultant. So I'm highly confident that they can figure this out. The other issue is with respect to timeline. So this is something that I've been talking with staff about. You know, initially, AECOM had committed to having everything done by the end of the year. It seems like the timeline is slipping. I've encouraged them to get back on time. There are some things that can move in parallel. So, you know, I think, I think they're being kind of cautious in giving us a timeframe that's April to, you know, summertime. You know, candidly, my expectation is it's going to be done sooner. I'm hoping that we are going to start moving dirt by March. I, you know, I've expressed to them that there's a lot of these things that we could be doing that will streamline the process. I don't want to cut corners on design or engineering, but we can streamline the process. Our process tends to be a little overly bureaucratic. And I think that we can do whatever we need to do so that we're moving all the balls forward at the same time so that we can get this project done. You know, as you said, Mayor, this community was promised this project years ago. The requirements from the comprehensive agreement and then the amendment that we did to the comprehensive agreement suggested to the community that they'd be playing in this park for the last two years. So we're behind schedule for a variety of reasons. You know, I'm not here to, you know, sort of relitigate the past, if you will. But I don't want to leave the community hanging any longer. Everything we do that delays opening this park is... Every other community has a signature park, whether it's a Snyder Park, a Carter Park, a Mills Pond Park, a Holiday Park. Tell me what big park we have up there in the central part of District 1. There isn't one. This is our park. And my community expects it. Years ago was to accomplish these things. And they've been waiting patiently and candidly. I can tell you all by the phone calls and emails and text messages I get, not so patiently. So whatever we can do as a city to honor our promises to the neighborhood, to the community, I think it's imperative that we do that. You know, we can't continue to tell my neighbors, my residents, my constituents that we're going to push them aside because we've got folks from Miami coming up here looking for a parking space. That's just, that's not a good answer for me to give to them or for this commission to give to them. We have to value our own neighbors, our own residents, our own taxpayers before we value the convenience of people driving up here from out of town to come see a game.
Okay. Anything further? Very good. Thank you so much, Carl. Okay, moving on to business two, Fort Lauderdale Police Headquarters update. Who will be giving that?
Anthony's going to be coming up and doing that. And I think we provided you a hard copy of the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioner, Anthony Vahardo, Assistant City Manager. So I think you did receive a copy of this this morning. We tried to, we were delayed putting it out. We just wanted to make sure the information was the most up-to-date we have. I'll get to that in just a second. But basically, I'm going to go through a little bit of the project status, the deflection summary, what we did in terms of the peer reviews, and then go over the very basics of the structural enhancements that we're talking about. And then obviously, if there's any questions, we can ask those.
Anthony, this is not online yet, is it?
It's not on, and I don't think it's online yet, David.
So, so yes, it's added to the meeting details section of the agenda, but it wouldn't show up on your iPad.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And we have a copy for the public to inspect out by the sign-in table.
So approximate status of the project is still about 50% complete. What you see on the screen is a little bit of a duplicate of what I had on the screen last time back in July. But basically, what you see up there is the drywall, the elevator installation, the shooting range, the stucco installation, and the main electrical room. Were all started in around June, July. They are now largely completed, in some cases, 75, 85% complete. And then overall, the site work, the vault has been completed and turned over to FPL. over to FPL. The south side asphalt paving has its first lift completed. We're doing utility tie-ins should be done by September 13th, and we're working on the temporary radio shelter, which we'll get to that in a little bit as well. So basically, this is to just give you a more fleshed-out idea of what happened. We all, and to recap for everyone who's listening. So this all started in March, uh, with an RFI that Moss identified a deflection issue. Thornton Thomasetti, the engineer of record, developed a repair that I'll, I'll touch on here in just a minute. And there were meetings held with Building Services and designs approved and permit issued to start the work. Unfortunately, in April, after the, um, concrete had cured and all the, all the work had been, uh, completed, we identified that the deflection was still ongoing. So we brought in Lacus Yohalim Engineering, LYE, they're represented here as well, um, to co-develop designs with Thornton Thomasetti and AECom and move those forward. Lacus provided an initial report in May, and then in June, temporary soaring was installed. Engineered designs for the structural enhancements continued to be under development with that team. In July, the supplemental recommendations were submitted to the city for review. AECom, LYE, and Building Services granted a very specific request of Moss, who's the construction company involved in the development of the project, to do specific work in that area as long as it didn't cover anything up that was going to need to be repaired or enhanced. And staff started researching additional peer review firms to take a look at the project. Um, in August, the submittal went to Building Services. Right now, we've gotten a response from Building Services and a permit's been issued for the structural work on the roof. We were waiting for some additional information on micro piles for the foundation work, and so that is still ongoing and hopefully will be submitted to Building Services soon if it hasn't already been this week. And then we also interviewed four firms to do additional peer reviews. So if you remember, we have Thornton Thomasetti, who's the engineer of record. They're the ones responsible for the Florida statute for the, for the design. Um, AECom is the architect of record. We brought in LYE as an outside peer review, but there were some concerns that we should probably have somebody else take another look, not only at the deflection area, but at the rest of the project as well. So that was the discussion we had with the three firms. And you can see here, we interviewed UCI Engineering, Walter P. Moore, um, WJE, and Bliss and Nitre. We ended up going with WJE. And just so you're aware, on those phone calls was the development team from the city side as well as, uh, the police chief, Bill Schultz, and, uh, his staff. So basically what WJE is going to do a peer review of is a phased approach. Um, just to give you some background, they were founded 65 years ago. They, I put national firm with offices in London, so I guess that makes them international. Um, they specialize in investigation, analysis, testing and design of structural repairs and retrofit solutions. They, they actually work in a very specific niche, and WJE is represented, WJE is here represented by Matt Fadden, um, in case you have any questions for them. We haven't gotten them on yet. We did get some final paperwork from them today. Hopefully, we will bring them under contract before the end of the week. And then you can see also on here that they've conducted over 175,000 investigations worldwide, and some of the projects they've worked on in the past were the Rickards Middle School roof collapse, um, the Champlain Towers tragedy, the Alcatraz cellhouse structural stabilization, FIU pedestrian bridge, and the evaluation of the Washington Monument following the earthquake, as well as the Metropolitan Highway System structural evaluation, safety review, and structural repairs. So we felt confident with their background and what they've done in the past.
Do we have a timetable?
Yes, I'm getting to that right now.
You are? Okay.
So the deflection area will be the phase, the first phase of the approach. So we wanted to focus on that so work can continue as expeditiously as possible while still getting the issue resolved. So that is approximately going to be four weeks. So the focus on that and then the move on to phase two will be, which will be the remainder of the building, and that'll be approximately six weeks.
Is that four weeks plus six weeks?
Yes.
So it's 10 weeks.
If there's, if there's some overlap, we might be able to shave some time off of it. We really wanted them to focus on the deflection area because, as you recall during some of the conversations, some of those structural members are underneath the, the ultimate roofing design, so it needs to be covered up at some point. So to make sure that that work can continue, we wanted them to focus in that area. Just to kind of reorient you with the building and issue.
Anthony, four weeks starting, I mean, anticipated start date.
If we can, if we can get them on this week, I mean.
Okay.
Probably next week started, I would hope. Yeah. Uh, so north is at the top of the screen. You see the little dots. Those are cars on Broward Boulevard. The deflection area is roughly that gold line, and the deflection is in the direction of north from the cantilever point where that beam is. Phase one, again, will just focus on that area, four weeks, with phase two focusing on the remainder of the building, approximately six weeks. This is a cross-section of the building, so you're actually looking at an east-west direction, and what you'll see is kind of the overall enhancements. So the first thing that was installed was the haunch on the third floor. That's the, that's the vertical column with the, the kickout. The red line at the top represents the structural enhancements to the roof, and then what you see at the bottom are additional enhancements to that column as well as the foundation. The next image shows you at another oblique angle, so you can see exactly where those things are.
Go back two slides real quick.
Sure.
One more. Okay, this is what it was before.
This is what it was before.
This is your baseline, and the next one is, okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
And the red is the addition.
The red is the addition.
Okay, go ahead.
And then again, this is just from a different angle, so you can see it's in more than just the two locations that was originally anticipated. It's going to be on four locations on the roof and four locations at the foundation. So next steps is to try and finalize the agreement with WJE as quick as we can. Building Services is still doing the review of the additional enhancements and getting those permits, um, issued, and then implementing those structural enhancements by Moss. We are working with WJE. Um, we do have a small kickoff meeting tomorrow with AECom and Thornton Thomasetti to discuss this in more detail, but we'd like for the work to take place concurrently with the work going on on the site. I spoke to WJE briefly about that. They said that is a possibility, so we'll know more once we get into it in more detail. And then other items to, uh, to address is the relocation of the radio equipment into the shelter that's already placed on the site. This will let us demo the building, the existing building, after we abate it, which you see is the next little item. General site work, and then the completion, completion of the project sometime in September of 2025. And that is basically my presentation.
Anthony, I'm sorry, if we could go back to, um, slides 14 and 15. Um, let's go at 15. We could, yes.
15. Okay.
Okay. If, if, how much deeper that addition that's going onto the ground there, that extension?
Oh, the additional piles?
Yeah, how much, how much, how deeper is the columns that's supporting?
I'd, if I gave you a number, I'd be guessing, so I'd probably want to get back to you that information at a later date.
What was your question again?
The additional, the additional.
The additional, yeah.
How deep? How much more is the foundation?
Oh, I see.
Being added to the, um.
It's like footage.
Destruction.
Yeah, they're micro piles, um, so they'll be in addition to what's already there to help support the foundation.
And this is not going to extend the timeframe, the original contemplated timeframe for completion?
If we can keep the work moving, it shouldn't.
It's not the answer I was looking for.
It's the best answer I got. Um, we don't anticipate, we've been working hard with Moss. Moss has been really good about rescheduling things, taking different directions of, of travel when it comes to where they're starting, of different options to keep the project on task. However, we did have a, a, a meeting with them this morning, and we still are on for September if we can keep it moving.
December?
September.
September. Okay.
And also, Anthony, this, this enhancement has already been made or is this pending?
So the red, so see the two columns on the, on the third floor?
Right.
Those are the ones that were put in on the original design, and then directly beneath those, there's some additional foundation work that was done. That's probably not well-represented on the screen, but then everything else you see will be additional to what was done originally.
And is not yet installed.
Not yet installed.
I mean, the original, I mean, the original fix, not the original design?
The original fix, correct.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much, Anthony. Business three, um, business, uh, excuse me, presentation of a draft ordinance to prohibit camping on public property. Who's going to take this? Tom?
Chris.
Chris, Chris, I'm sorry, our czar.
We should have flipped a coin, Tom. So in your backup, there's a draft ordinance that the city attorney's office has put together. It very closely follows what we presented to you last meeting in terms of what we contemplated that ordinance containing, and it also follows what is required by the state statute. So again, to be compliant with House Bill 1365, we as a city need to take steps to prohibit, um, camping, the overnight camping on our public properties. So that's what this ordinance is intended to do. It starts with definitions of what camping is and, and the like, and it closely follows state statute. It then gets into the process by which our enforcement, um, folks, police, park rangers, whoever's in, is interacting with that individual that's camping in violation of this ordinance will follow. It includes things like, first, asking them to move off the property, second, um, finding out if there's any services or treatments that that person may need and, and facilitating their move to those facilities. So that could be a hospital, it could be addiction or mental treatment facilities and the like. And it also then contemplates a notice to appear at our community court program. If all else fails, the ordinance does contemplate that that person could be arrested on a, on a, on a city misdemeanor charge. I'm sure there'll be some questions based on the article that was in the paper about how that may or may not work, but that's what the ordinance currently contemplates happening ultimately if the person is unwilling to avail themselves of any of the other opportunities to, um, be removed from that public camping situation.
Okay.
You will notice too, I do want to point out that there's a section in there that says this is public properties. That does not include parks. The ordinance that you presented is for any public property 24/7, so sidewalks, benches, streets, wherever the case may be.
Beach.
So that's under parks. So for parks, there's already a parks rule, and there's provisions in the code currently that prohibits the sleeping on the beach in parks, um, sleeping on the beach anytime, but sleeping in parks and being in parks after they're closed to the public.
Okay. All right. Uh, anyone have any questions?
I do.
But, go ahead.
Well, I have a lot of questions. So in light of the editorial from the sheriff the other day.
All right, now, I have a call. I just got a call from the sheriff, so I'm going to hand the gavel over to you.
Okay.
And I, let me take this call and see what he has to say.
So can I recognize myself to speak? Is that, is that how that works? Okay. So I'll, I'll recognize myself to speak. Um, so Chris, help me understand. Okay, so if we pass this ordinance, and then again, I'm looking for also a more of a holistic conversation. I want to hear from the city attorney. I want to hear from Susan, our city manager, about conversations. When I read, when I read the law, it looks like a lot of responsibility is placed on the county, uh, for coming up with these alternative sites, for just making sure that once this law goes into effect, uh, the county is dealing with this. So I don't know where that is right now. I don't know what conversations you've had with the city and the county attorney and Susan, um, you know, with the county administrator. So let's start there. Like, what kind of partnership are we involved in now? Uh, and as October is fast approaching, um, what do you see, um, the county doing? We have this ordinance in front of us. Does the county have an ordinance in front of them? Yes.
Excuse me. As of last week, Vice Mayor, I was told that the county had, was drawing an ordinance and then had withdrawn or abandoned it. I called today after the holiday to see is that true? It is not true. There is an ordinance. I just sent it to Chris and others today that we just found that is proposed to go to the county commission for discussion September 17th, the next date of our meeting, of course, and then October 8th for its passage. It's predicated on the state law. When you talk about the law, you're talking about the state law, 1365. So it has a lot of those components, but it has an interesting way of dealing with the issues to send people to an adult citation program, which I'm not familiar with. It's news to me how to deal with it rather than using it as an arrest. It's, it's like a diversion program, and I'm still trying to figure out how that works out. But I spoke to the drafter today, and we are interested in seeing what it means and how it affects us. But Chris will tell you, we worked very hard with our prosecutors, our legal advisor, Chris and I, and another lawyer in my office, to put this together for you today. So we would have something in, just in case the county didn't do something or didn't do what we thought would be warranted for our city, we'd be ready to go. So we're ready to go September 17th, subject to your discussion about things you'd like to see in it or difference, and then October 1, it would pass on second reading, and we'd get it signed from the clerk that day, that afternoon, so it would be in effect that night. For the first time, the law would be in effect.
Have you seen the draft of the county?
I, I've only saw it about 10 minutes ago, yes.
So Tom passed that on to us as well, and it was interesting that after that diversion program, the next option was arrest under a state statute. So I thought that was very interesting in light of the op-ed that we had seen in the Sun Sentinel. So they, they had that. I don't know if it remains.
Sheriff just tried calling me. I tried calling him back. He said he can, has to call me back, so.
Okay.
Before the end of the meeting, hopefully we'll have that conversation.
So I was just asking, and Tom and Susan said they have seen a draft that the county has of an ordinance, but, um, okay, so that being said, so that's, that's a good step, right? That's a good step.
It replicates much of what we have in ours.
What is extremely difficult to deal with, if the sheriff is correct, that he's instructed in detention not to accept municipal ordinance violations for our ordinance and other cities for this, to not even accept them for arrest, it does all kinds of bad things, not just for this ordinance, but every ordinance that we prosecute in the county court, uh, even when they are, they are felonies and misdemeanors, we prosecute those under a city ordinance that embraces them. Code Section 16 dash 1 says if you commit a felony or misdemeanor in our city, we, uh, prosecute it under what's called 16 dash 1. That way, we keep, uh, control of the, of the, the prosecution and everything else that goes with it. If we do this and he does this, it undercuts all our ability to enforce what municipal ordinance is in the county court and circuit court system, which would be horrible.
Well, do you think he was just referring to encampment and homeless-related issues or everything?
I would think, but the way it's written and his quote, it says everything.
Right.
I read that to mean what you said.
So when I get to talk with him, we'll find that out.
So if we, if we're going to discuss this for a possible, I guess, coming back to us on the 17th and then the 1st, right?
Correct.
For the two readings.
Correct.
But there would be no teeth in this at all, correct? I mean, we could pass this, but if the sheriff refuses to deal with it, then where, where's the, where are the teeth that could make this effective or for enforcement?
So my idea was, and it was just an initial thing over the weekend, what if we, uh, keep our ordinance and then we cite as well for our ordinance and as a, tandem, in tandem with it, trespass a state law and do that under the, you know, person's arrested as like two counts. It happens all the time. You do one thing, but there are several counts of the violation. So we, that way we'd get in the door as a state, and he, they would have to accept those people because now it's a state violation. Uh, I haven't worked out how that would work or what he's saying here, but what he says is no longer accept individuals brought to the jail for purely municipal ordinance violations. That's everything we do.
Shoplifting.
Everything.
Yeah, that's very encompassing.
Other than serious felonies, we do everything, uh, through our own system so we can control the prosecution, could deal with the people who are harmed by it, and then ultimately we, uh, have it in effect on the penalties, the fines, dealing with the people who are harmed. All that is in our control and needs to remain there.
And as Chris said, we did not expect, we're not saying we can arrest ourselves out of homelessness. What we are saying though, that we need, as you said, that teeth in order as a last resort, um, to be able to have that, um, you know, the first resort is to, you know, offer them shelter, offer them programming. Um, but again, that would be the last resort. But again, without the, the sheriff taking them, we, it does not have teeth.
As though, I'm sorry.
The way the ordinance is written, it's got structures in it where the arresting officer has to go through different things to see, do you have a place to go? Do you, you know, do we have a bed to put them in? When they exhaust that, or when they reach the point where the person says, I'm not going, that's when they're susceptible to arrest. Nobody intends or wants to arrest themselves out of a homeless issue. Homeless, being homeless is not something that's criminal in itself. We all know that. We all get it.
You're not going to get any disagreement on that.
No, nobody's going to do that.
So let me ask this then. In your conversations, both of you with your county counterparts, where are we in terms of this law also? Um, the county, again, correct me if I'm wrong, seems to have a responsibility here to provide those facilities that you talk about, those beds that you talk about, a place to go. What's happening in that regard? We all know that we're woefully short of beds and places to go, and what's happening there?
Well, again, going back to the way this, the statute is written, the county may elect to put a camping site someplace, and if it's within the city, it needs majority vote of the people who govern that city. I have was here, and they wanted a site in Fort Lauderdale, three fifths of you would have to approve it, but they're not obligated to provide a camping site. There's, it's just not on them.
So, so I, I had a meeting with Mayor Nanrich last week, and, uh, we talked about a lot of different things, but including this issue. things, but including this issue. And she too believed that at some point, the stockade should be available for the pallet home program that we have been talking about, that they've been talking about. But her concern is that the site in its current condition cannot be used. It's dilapidated, they never really kept it up. And she applauded us for, first of all, our aggressive program for affordable housing. She says we're the only city in the entire county that has been as aggressive in providing affordable housing as we have. And, but furthermore, she believes that her commission, her board, should consider more than, I think, what was it, 10 they were going to buy, 10 pallet homes? She's, you know, she feels it should be many multiple times of that in order to really address the issue. So we agreed on that. I was more forceful in trying to get her to push forward on trying to scrape the site, which she agrees has to happen, before we can put the pallet homes there. So the question is really where to put these pallet homes, and I've come up with a couple of ideas. I'm not, I'm not sure how feasible any one is, there's going to be no perfect place for this, but as has been pointed out a time and again, we do have a deadline. I don't think the deadline's October, I think it's January, that's when someone has a cause of action against us.
That's correct. We could be sued in circuit court by anybody who's affected by it adversely, including the state attorney.
And we're looking at the period of October, November, December of being refinement of some of these ideas.
A transition, right.
Yeah, to get to where we need to be.
Don't forget, by the way, we had proposed to you that this be an ordinance that would ban sleeping during the day as well. That's not required in the state law.
Right.
We decided that's the way to approach this, that you just can't camp out and target on a bus bench or wherever it is in the daytime as well as night. So that's the intent of the law.
Okay, that's our law. Is that the county's law too? No, okay. So we're sort of creating a broad range of requirements that if the sheriff ultimately is going to be able to enforce municipal violations, that we would have this much broader opportunities to try to circumvent behavior that we have prescribed.
The reason that we are seeking to have the ability to put people in jail temporarily is for those who will not go voluntarily and leave the site when it's supposed to or are having difficulties because of whether it's drugs, alcohol, any combination, mental illness, it gives us an opportunity to screen them while they're there and then get them into a program so that right away, we can send them off to a community court, which we use and we're going to increase from one day a week to two. This other idea that the county has might be worth looking into, Chris and I will look at that as well. But that's the intent, is not to put somebody in there, make them stay there for 90 days. No one wants to punish a person for being homeless, we all get that.
We, yeah, we all get that.
It's the teeth to say, and another thing that was important to me to bring from my prosecutors, is that when we take people in and they realize, all my goods in the shopping cart, what are you going to do with them? We'll inventory them, we'll hold them for 30 days, but if it's something that's perishable like food or dirty mattresses, we can't keep those, all those are gone. So it encourages the people to pay attention, you need to move on and keep this stuff out of here. So the threat of going to jail gets, is an impetus to them to pay attention and deal with us. Taking that away, if the sheriff is correct, would be catastrophic.
So I just want to add to this, you mentioned community court, and, you know, a couple of Wednesdays ago, I had the opportunity, I happened to be at City Hall, and I walked across the street, and I wanted to see what was happening in our community court. And let me tell you something, 95% of the people that were there were there voluntarily. They are seeking help. The room was absolutely packed with people, there must have been 50, 60 people in a very small room, all hoping, wishing they could get help, social services, their addiction treatment, mental health, sometimes just to get an ID card. I sat with a couple of them and spoke and, and, you know, it's not just the people that are loitering or camping, it's people that are in need and looking for help. Unfortunately, we don't have a place to take them after we've, you know, set them up with treatment services. We don't have enough beds, we don't have enough shelter. Yes, we keep asking the county to help, you know, be a little bit more aggressive on this, you know, we're still working with the county to see what opportunities they may provide, but it really, you know, a lot of the responsibility is going to end up on our lap, and so we can't just sit idly by and think that it's someone else's problem, even though it is a regional problem, a community problem, and I think that, but we really have a big burden, especially since the enforcement of this is going to take place at the beginning of next year. Honestly, I would love to see the governor step in here and suspend the enforcement of this until they've worked out the kinks. I think that they probably have sought, thought certain things about what they were trying to do by passing the statute, but not thinking it all the way through. I'm sure they're being inundated with letters and emails of sorts, saying, you know, hold off, this is becoming a tremendous burden, both in Democratic counties as well as Republican counties. I mean, it's a big burden for everybody. So I really, you know, I would ask the governor, you know, sign an executive order suspending the enforcement of this until we can figure out a way to fund this and a way through this. It's a big problem for everybody, and I think that the legislature and the governor's office should give these local communities like our own a chance at trying to figure this way through.
Also, when they, when they pass legislation like this, it would, you know, these unfunded mandates are difficult to assist the counties and the cities as well.
I agree.
This should be a partnership amongst all of those governmental entities, and you can't just have laws passed in Tallahassee and then let local governments say, well, figure it out, or pay for it yourself, or it's difficult. And this is especially, especially difficult. Tom, do you see anything in the draft version of the county that you would be able to borrow from, that you maybe didn't think of, or was there something in there that was particularly good that you thought we should also have?
Vice Mayor, what I did like, and again, it's a cursory review from 10 months before getting in here, is this idea about an adult program where it was like a diversion program. That sounds very interesting, I might even want to work with Chris and our own people to add that as an option. I don't even know how it works yet, but it sounds like, and other people who are familiar with it say it works well. Well, I'd like to know what it is.
Well, in a criminal context, if you go through a diversion program like drug rehabilitation or alcohol rehabilitation or whatever, it, you, then your charge is expunged from the record.
Correct, not expunged, but dropped.
Dropped, well, yeah, it's dropped, it's, I'm sorry, I used the wrong word.
It's postponed, it's a whole other process.
Yeah, his case is dropped, there's no charge against you, but you have to go through this program of rehabilitation. But in a homeless context, we're still dealing with a shelter, a place, a bed, a pillow, where they can, where they can be in the meantime, and that has not been addressed.
Mr., can I?
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. This is an agenda item specifically for the ordinance, and no, obviously because it deals with homeless, you're tying in the homeless solution, and for sake of efficiencies, can I ask that, I will be giving a report on my commission conference, so I will give, address a lot of the things that you did bring up. So I think the thing at hand is really the ordinance itself and all these other issues that we could have an opportunity when I present later on. Is that okay?
Yeah, sure. It's, hey, it's our prerogative, whichever works best for you. And I have three people sign up to speak, is there anyone else on the commission that wants to comment right now?
Yes, Mayor, on a couple of items. So one with respect to your hope that the governor will suspend the ordinance, I think we have a better chance of seeing the governor suspend the sheriff before he suspends the ordinance, because the governor has shown a, the governor has shown a willingness to remove.
Is that being facetious or is that a wish?
No, no, I'm quite serious. The governor, the governor has already, Tom, confirm with me, the governor's already removed the state attorney preemptively for saying that he was not going to follow the law and was sued by that individual and lost. So the governor has taken a dim view of people who don't execute on their responsibilities, particularly with respect to law enforcement. So I hope Sheriff Tony reconsiders this before Tallahassee steps in and invites him to seek job opportunities elsewhere. But with respect to your conversation with Nanrich, Mayor, I just want to express my displeasure for that. So before you volunteer any locations in District 1, would you please socialize that with the commission? And let's have that conversation internally before you go talk to the county mayor and offer up the stockade as a locality to create a new homeless village of tiny homes. Let's have that conversation here before you go have that conversation elsewhere, because I can tell you, I am fielding phone calls from all my businesses up there on Powerline Road that are losing their minds right now, because they didn't invest in their area to see it turned into, you know, tiny homeless village. So, you know, this is, this is something that we need to be talking about as a policy decision before you go and speak to the county mayor and say, I've got a solution that I read about down in the Sun Sentinel. So I take strong objection to the way in which you handle this. Let's talk about that internally first and decide as a policy, as a commission, if that's the way we're going to go, and let's engage the community first, Mayor. Let's talk to those business owners up there that have invested uncounted millions and tens of millions of dollars. I am trying to redevelop Uptown as a second business and residential district in this city, and before we do anything that jeopardizes that, let's talk about this first at the commission level. So I'm not saying we can't have this conversation with the county at some point, but if you recall, I have been calling for the last six months for us to sit down with the county and work out a plan for this. I've been saying for six months, let's not stick our head in the sand. This is coming, we can't ignore it, and the fact is, here we now on the verge of needing to implement the ordinance, and we still haven't sat down with the county. We still haven't sat down with the sheriff. We haven't sat down with Pompano and Hollywood and had joint meetings on this. So I respectfully, Mayor, please, don't volunteer my district in conversations with another governmental entity until you've talked to my community, to my business owners up there who are going to want to know what's going on before they read about it in the paper, and I don't have an answer to give them. So you did me a grave disservice when you did that.
Okay, well, look, let me just stop right there, and I don't want, I don't want to argue with you, but when I, when we've made the offer to the county to have a conversation with regard to this, we've gotten no response that indicated that they're interested in doing an on-bank meeting with us and them. What Commissioner Sturman and myself and anyone else on this board can do is have one-on-one discussions with any member of the county commission, and I thank Warren Sturman for doing that, I've done it, and I'm sure all of us have had the occasion from time to time to talk with a county commissioner with regard to possible opportunities. I'm not going to debate whether, whether your idea or whoever's idea it was to have a, you know, put people in cars and have them sit in their cars and live in their cars.
Wasn't my idea.
Well.
Wasn't my idea.
Okay, well.
But we read about it in the paper before we had a discussion at the commission.
Take that up with Commissioner Sturman, please.
Yeah, but they attributed it to you too.
It's not my idea.
Wait, wait, hold on. Yes, yes.
Please.
Do me one favor, wait, wait, Dean, maybe I can make this simple. Wait for my report, I have a path forward, and we'll go through, we'll discuss all this at my report, the way we're going to proceed.
Okay, I get that, I get you'll make your report, but I want to finish my response. So the point is that we have, we have to take any opportunity we can to talk with our, members of our county commission as those opportunities materialize. My meeting with Nanrich wasn't just about this issue, it was about a whole series of issues, and we discussed a whole series of options, not just with regard to the stockade, but other places as well. The point is, she had ideas, I had ideas, and we exchanged ideas. So hopefully we'll get to do that with each member of the commission. If it's not going to happen unbunk, it's going to happen individually, and we should, we should be applauded for those efforts, not condemned. So I take issue with your trying to denigrate our efforts to try to seek solutions, especially since we have deadlines. Now, with regard to reaching out to the community and seeing what the community thinks about where we could locate a, whatever kind of sheltering program that we come up with, of course we are going to do that, we always do that. That's our responsibility to do that. So nothing is in stone, these are just ideas that are being put out there, the newspaper needs something to print about, so whatever we say, they're going to put it in print. You know what, I have to applaud the newspaper for at least bringing this to the point where people are talking about it. For the last year, two years, or three years, we haven't been talking about it. Ever since we were able to clear up the encampment in front of the library, we've sort of forgotten about it. The whole business community, the whole, the whole program that we started back in 2018 when I first became mayor, yes, the business community anted up significant sums in order to try to house homeless people, but after the first year, it just, it just disintegrated. And, you know, I don't know how that happened or why that happened, but we certainly saw a disintegration of interest in this community in terms of trying to deal with the, with the situation with the homeless. Unfortunately, that, we see more and more homeless people throughout the city, and sometimes the behavior of some homeless people is really unpleasant and unfortunate, and we need to address that. But working together with our police department, our homeless outreach team, and other stakeholders and community members is the only way we're going to be able to resolve this. We've been talking, it's now, we need, now need to put this talk into action, and we've got to come up with solutions. So, you know, I don't want us, I don't want us to be up here arguing amongst each other for unpetty little things. We need, the community is asking us to come up with solutions, and we're, this is a forum for discussion, and let's have that discussion, not, you know, set grandstanding and saying who should do what and shouldn't say what, that's not what the community wants, they want solutions. So let's try to come up with solutions, try to be constructive, and try to get this thing resolved.
Mayor, if I may, I want to acknowledge the efforts of the county attorney's office with whom I spoke immediately when we learned about this law. I reached out to Drew Myers, my counterpart, the county attorney, he was very helpful in meeting with us. We had three meetings already with the various city attorneys and the county attorney's offices, one scheduled for this Friday, so that dialogue has been underway. So the county has been, it stepped up legally to try to work with us, and that effort I appreciate.
And I, and to add to that, I reached out to nine other, nine other mayors on the east side of Broward County, asking them, as soon as this thing came up, as soon as it was passed, I reached out to each of those nine mayors, and eight of them said, sorry, we'll take care of our own problem, we don't need to meet. The only one was the mayor of Hallandale Beach and Joy Cooper, and we ended up deciding not to meet with each other because it was, it made no sense, it was just us, it should have been a collective effort of all the mayors. So again, I would like everyone on this commission to feel free to speak to other, our peers in other cities as well as at the county level, and if someone knows the governor, give the governor a call and see how, how we can, you know, hopefully collaborate in trying to resolve this problem.
Mayor, in our, in our conversations, we need to also include affordable, sustainable housing, because they go hand in hand. We cannot just say we're going to go out and address the individuals without homes without discussing why they're without homes as well. So in these conversations that we're having right now, this circle of what, who, and said, who said what, who conversated with each other, let's make sure that we are including conversation about sustainable, affordable housing, and that way we can, this can be a tandem attempt instead of being a separate effort, because we don't want to say, okay, we'll address the homelessness, we're going to give them wraparound services, and yet they have nowhere to live.
Your point is well taken, I agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And there's one other thing I wanted, until they see progress, and that's even from mayors.
Has this come up at any of the meetings of the Broward League of Cities?
It has not, but I do plan to bring it up, because it is something that we need to address, and it should not be an individual city initiative, it should be county-wide. I'm hearing so much, one county. If we're one county, let's stand together and make this right for everyone.
Agreed. All right, I have three people sign up to speak, take them in order, Jim Lewis, followed by Chris Nelson, followed by Charles King. Hello, Jim.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. I got to push the button at the bottom of the speaker.
Uh-oh.
That one? That one, good.
All right, good afternoon, folks. These are, is a difficult issue, this Fort Lauderdale issue of homelessness is not new, it's been with us for a long time. Mayor Dean, you may remember, 15 or so years ago, there was a priest down on the beach that wanted to feed homeless people down there, and you and I were down there trying to keep him from being arrested. The boy times have really changed. The homeless situation has gotten worse, all you got to do is go over here to the Walmart or to the Target late at night and see people living out of their homes, living in cars. Not everybody in these situations is a drug addict, not everybody is an alcoholic.
Not everybody in these situations is a drug addict, not everybody is an alcoholic, not everybody's mentally ill, but certainly a lot of them are. And we as a community haven't done anything for years. And we can look and go back, it's the county's problem, it's a Fort Lauderdale problem. Go down and look at the bus station now, go look at the downtown, go look at the beach, and it's spreading out into the suburbs as well. And no, I don't believe the governor's going to come down and save us, or the Republican legislature's going to come down and change anything. And the sheriff, by saying he's not going to arrest any people, I don't think that's going to change anything either. There's going to be a homeless encampment somewhere. And the obvious place is that's going to be somewhere in the city of Fort Lauderdale because that's where the major problem is. And by continuing to kick this down the road until the very day that the statute becomes an ordinance is not responsible. And I know we can fight about nobody wants it in their district, and I understand that. I've made a suggestion. You've probably heard about it. I told my son the other day, my youngest son, I said, he said, let me get this right, Dad. You want to take the highest ranking professional soccer team in North America, who has the most famous soccer player in the world playing there, that's about to start the playoffs, and you want to put a homeless camp in their parking lot? And the answer is, it's got to go somewhere. I don't think a rooftop is appropriate, but there's a big blank, it's not a park, everybody's talking about, oh, it's going to be a park someday, we're working on it. No, they're not agreeing. The, the soccer team has done nothing but drag their feet in terms of providing this park, and we've done nothing to try to force that issue. We're still sitting here, we're at impasse, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know if there's going to be a park in 2025, 2026, 2027. But we know in October, we're going to have a homeless crisis problem where these people have to go. And there's nothing wrong with a big vacant lot, we're only going to use a portion of it, it would be out towards commercial, we can put some portable showers in there, and we can comply and be compassionate and give place, people to go, where churches can feed them, and we can give them services. Does that mean my time is up? Let me, let me just end by this. There has to be some, maybe my solution isn't the best one, but there has to be one, and continuing to kick this down the road and to say it's the county's problem, it's not our problem, is not responsible. Please be responsible, do something, find someplace, do it now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So Mayor, I just need to kind of correct the record on that. So Jim, there may not be playgrounds there right now, and there may not be community centers right now, but that's zoned as a park. It is a park. Just want to correct that for the record, it is a park.
There needs to be some emergency action, and if that means you undesignate that as a park until we get this temporary thing away.
Can't, can't, can't do it.
Then where are we going to put it?
That's the whole point of designating things.
Where are we going to put it, Commissioner? Well, that's the conversation we're having.
Where are we going to put it? I've already, we've already had lots of conversations about that, but we're not putting it in a park. We're not putting it in a park. I will never, under any circumstances, allow anybody to create a homeless camp in any city park. We have 110 city parks in the city of Fort Lauderdale. I am telling anybody that's listening today, we will never have a homeless camp in a park, not now, not ever.
You go out there and look, it's a trash pile, there's no park there. Okay, maybe you go to a park.
There's nothing there now. Thank you.
For clarification, Susan, didn't we during COVID use our parks for a lot of those types of services, for services, shelter, for, you name it? I remember Holiday Park in my district was used during COVID to provide all those services on an emergency basis.
The COVID inoculations, yeah, we did.
Yes, we did. I just want to mention that.
We had testing sites and vaccination sites.
Yes. When the need, right, when the need was there, we have used our parks for those kinds of services.
Well, I, I don't think we're there, yes.
Are we comparing the homeless problem to COVID?
Yeah.
The once in a hundred year pandemic? All right, thank you, I'm so glad we got that on the record.
Okay. All right, Chris. All the mayoral candidates are here speaking.
Yeah, we're here.
Yes.
Hey, I'm here no matter what.
Okay.
Chris Nelson.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Chris Nelson. So I don't know if Sheriff Dr. Tony really wants to get into this and, and start saying he's not going to obey state laws and play a game of chicken with the governor, especially given his recent ethics investigations and the fact that he might not even have a, a license to be a police officer for a period of time, I think. And also the debacle with his overspending on that, that training center that he built with his name all over it. But, I mean, if he does, I don't think he does, so call his bluff. Call his bluff, arrest some people, and then have him turn them away, and then see how that works out. That's what I would do. I was very, very encouraged, Mayor Dean, about your email, that you're talking about cracking down. You're talking about cracking down. Where's that tough talk now? Because that was the right way. I got an answer. I've got a solution, actually. And it's definitely not what Jim Lewis just said. Absolutely not. Miami Beach, the city of Miami Beach, Mayor Steven Minor, they started on this two months ago, okay? Their homeless outreach program. I got a message from City Commissioner Alex Fernandez. He says the following. They have been, from the peak of 235 individuals in January, homeless individuals they had, the highest homeless population over a decade, we have successfully reduced this number to 132 as of August 2024. Miami Beach, they had a big problem down there, okay? The decrease reflects the positive impact of our comprehensive approach, blah, 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 including in fiscal year 2023, we placed 542 individuals into shelters and facilitated 305 family reunifications. That means people that are like from out of state or something like that, getting them back together with, you know, whoever they're fighting with, it's why they're homeless, you know what I mean? And, and, and then taking care of them, not just like saying, okay, you can stay here, okay? We're on track to potentially exceed last year's totals by the end of the fiscal year. So, but listen to this. To date, the Miami Beach Police Department has made one, 201 arrests under this ordinance, okay? I like the idea that you got here. I like what we're vote, what you're voting on right now. Minor, okay? He, he, I, he knows what he's doing, he's, he's got something going on. So that's the mayor that I would talk to, and I would go down this path. They've been doing it. Listen to what they're doing for shelters, because I brought this up once before. The city of Miami Beach manages shelter beds at three different shelters to ensure the correct placement for anyone seeking help. Our shelter providers are Salvation Army, we got that right down there, Miami Rescue Mission, and Calumis House. We have on Ninth Avenue Power Line, right there by where the Barrett Stockade is, is Fay Farm, okay? Which is like a work program for people that are homeless. We have Calvary House, that's in Pompano. We got the Salvation Army. We set, we do what Miami Beach is doing, set that up, get it, don't wait for the county, they're not, I've seen how it is with them.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Do what Miami Beach is doing, they got something going on there.
I don't want the public to think that our staff and our, our, our police and, and homeless outreach people have been sitting on their hands all these years. We continue to do exactly what Miami Beach has been doing. We continue to do, we continue to make progress. We have sheltered and helped reunify people every single day. So we may not put it out in the newspaper, it may not be, you know, something that has been publicized, but Chris, I just want you to be rest assured that we have those same programs here. And one other thing I want you to, want to point out, that the county, Miami Dade County, has just opened up, I forget how many bed shelter is it, Chris, Chris, where's Chris Cooper? Do you recall how, it just opened up. The county built this very large shelter for the unhoused. I, I believe it's 200 and some odd beds, something like that? Anyway, the point is that, that the city of Fort Lauderdale continues to work to ensure that we have an ongoing process of trying to help those who are unhoused with an opportunity to, to obtain shelter, be, be associated with whatever services they need, and, and to be able to continue this program. The, the big problem, of course, we will never seem to have enough beds for those folks who, who are seeking shelter. It's a challenge, every community has a challenge. I speak with mayors around the country who, who suffer through the same challenge that we do. It's not unique to Fort Lauderdale, it's not unique to Broward County, and it's not unique to Florida. So, you know, and I applaud those members of our police and, and civilian outreach. In fact, in the last year's budget, I believe we doubled the number of police officers who are working in terms of trying to assist in the, in the homeless outreach and reunification. So we are not sitting on our hands, we are, we are doing an amazing job. Unfortunately, the challenge keeps increasing year after year. Charlie.
In the Sun Sentinel article over the summer, where they brought up this car, commuter car homelessness park idea, Commissioner Sturman said, you know, just because we can't solve this problem, doesn't mean we can't treat it. And I don't think we want you to treat it, I think we want you to manage it. I want, I think we want to see the numbers shrink, like in these other cities that somehow are able to like shrink the numbers. And it just seems like the nonprofits have no interest in shrinking the numbers. I mean, I'm sure it's like a 1 in 10 person that changes their whole life and gets out of homelessness like this, but, but, you know, manage this, like, make the numbers shrink. There's got to be a way, like, I, I get calls all the time from telemarketers, you guys should have a little boiler room where you're calling these people's families all over the country where they come from, in Indiana, saying, you have a brother who's homeless in Fort Lauderdale. Do you feel any obligation?
Do you not think we already do that?
Do you have an organized call center?
Yes, we have it organized, we have a, we have a, we have a staff, it's an organization, it works every day, day in and day out.
The bus ticket should be flowing, you should be like, have a bus ticket, have a bus ticket. You should be handing them out like, just like, when you're, when you're shaking hands with people, you should be like, here's a bus ticket. Like, we have to move these people out, you know, like, to take them in and say.
A bus ticket to where?
To, anywhere, wherever they want to go. You can't make people go places. You say, would you like to go to Seattle? Would you like to go to San Diego and visit this program?
Busing our problem to Seattle is not a solution, so.
But if they want to go there, right? So at any rate, the last meeting, Warren Sturman came down here and he sort of gave these sort of numbers that weren't even true, like totally false numbers, they sent a Waylight, and he was talking about the point in time count. I don't even think Broward County did a federally mandated point in time.
We didn't do one in this year.
They didn't do one. Why, why is that? Because the numbers look so bad. It looks really bad for what they've been doing, you know? And as far as where are you going to put this facility, where are you going to put this tent where people are going to go? It's like, what about unincorporated Broward that they rule like it's their little sat trappy? Like, they can do whatever they want, there's no majority they have to, to get an idea? It's west of downtown, there, there's probably plenty of places you could be out there. I mean, I, I think as far as this idea that we're going to get sued, they're the ones that are the bad actors here that are going to get sued. Why don't you guys do one of your resolutions that you do all the time and say, we think you should open one of these facilities in unincorporated Broward that you rule and have, have nobody you have to ask permission for, you can just do it if you want to, and say, and they say, no, we don't do that, we don't believe in that, then it's, say, when we get sued, we're going to blame you. I'm not a lawyer, but it seems like we can't put these people somewhere because they refuse to participate, because they're from a different political party than the governor and the state legislature, is the reality of it. And a lot of them are ideologues, like Nan Rich is 82 years old, I'm sure she, you know, what were your, what was your meeting like? Was she with it? I doubt, I doubt she cares about results.
That's very insulting to her, so please, please.
That really is insulting. That's not right. I don't, I don't know you, Mr. King, but.
I think if we solve homelessness, she would be upset. Her life has brought us to this point.
All right.
I want to say this, Mr. King, I don't know you, I'm just learning you, and I, I believe in everyone having a right to share their opinion, but that was so disgraceful. Don't disregard people because of their age. We're in a society right now where we're seeing a cancer culture. One day, you will be 82, and you will want the respect of someone to give it to you. Don't do that. Please don't use your platform. I respect you coming to this diocese and to this platform to share your opinion, but don't bring other people down. Please, that's from my heart. Thank you for your comments, but don't bring that here to the diocese. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Pam, thank you so much.
Anyone else who wish to speak on this item? There being none? Okay, we'll continue. You have any other comments you'd like to add, Susan or Tom? No?
Did the attorney's office get all the feedback you needed as far as the ordinance goes?
Well, if you have comments about the ordinance itself, the wording of it at any point, you haven't talked about that, but you can certainly call me directly.
Right.
And say, I'd like you, could you fine tune this, fine tune that?
So when is it going to be put on the agenda?
September 17.
September 17.
For first reading, second reading on October 1.
Right.
And Tom mentioned that it would be not just overnight, but daytime as well, except for the parks. And I didn't know if there was any other feedback you needed.
No, the only thing, like I told him, and looking to, was what the county has proposed with this adult program. And it applies to not only adults, but also has a program for juveniles. Juveniles are also sent into these diversion programs. It mentions that in the county's encampment ordinance, I'll take a look at that as well for us.
And we would need to find out if they would afford us the opportunity to participate in that program as well, or would it only be for county violators of the ordinance, which we know is a much smaller surface area.
I can only urge you to work with the sheriff, do not undercut our ability to get people.
So I just got a text from him, he's in meetings now, he said he can't call me until after 5:00. So maybe tonight in my commission reports, I'll be able to report on our conversation.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, moving on to business four, the radio tower and radio systems update.
Yep, and I had mentioned during the previous budget meeting that in this year's CIP, or the 2025 CIP, we put aside $4 million for the radio tower, or the radio commit equipment.
Equipment.
Thank you.
Update.
Update. So Anthony and the folks from IT are going to give you an overview of that, just so you know.
Is this going to include a Stargate that we can kind of like pass through to another dimension?
Wouldn't that be nice? Sometimes I think we're in the other dimension already.
Just for the mayor.
We need toilets on that.
Good afternoon again, Anthony Pahar, Mr. City Manager. So we're going to be giving a brief presentation on the current status of the radio tower, the one that's located by the existing police department headquarters, some information on the proposed tower from the state, as well as the status of our equipment. Jason Swift, our division manager from IT, who really handles a lot of our radio issues, especially in partnership with FIRE and PD, they had, he has the, the technical expertise to be able to explain this to you in a way that I just can't, but I'll be here to help answer questions as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners. Thank you for the warm introduction. So, there we go.
I love your lapel tip.
Thank you, thank you. So I'm going to start with the radio tower update. Currently, we have a tower at 1300 Broward Boulevard, which is directly adjacent to the former FLPD headquarters. That tower is 350 feet in height, it was built in 1992 by the state of Florida. It resides on land that's leased from the city of Fort Lauderdale. With the development of the new PD HQ, that lease was not renewed. And as a result, the state of Florida has decided to establish a new tower west of I-95.
So this is the state's tower?
It's the state's tower, it's on our property.[1673.51] It's on our property.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I always thought it was the city's tower.
No, so a point of, point of clarification, the state has their radio system on it as well as the city of Fort Lauderdale. So we're joint tenants, but they actually constructed the tower.
And so if they're going to reconstruct the tower, it's going to be on, on their dime?
It's going to be on their dime, on their property. And we're currently drafting an MOU, which you guys will be seeing in a very short period of time, that allows the city of Fort Lauderdale to become a tenant on the new tower that they're building. Initially, there's going to be... Yes, sir.
Okay, so the tower right now is where?
It's at 1300 West Broward Boulevard.
It's at the police station?
Police station, right. Yes, sir.
And they're going to move it, I know west of the turnpike is where the, the BS, is not by BSO or where?
It's, it's actually right in front of the juvenile detention center, which is just due west of I-95.
I didn't think we owned that, we owned that property?
We do not, sir. It's actually owned by the state of Florida. So they're going to build on their property.
Okay, and what's going to be used on that tower? What, what type of services?
That's going to be the statewide law enforcement radio system, which is currently on the, the tower that we have. And it's also going to be the city of Fort Lauderdale.
Like PD, FIRE, all that sort of stuff?
Mm-hmm, our citywide radio system.
Okay. And they're going to, they are going to own that tower?
They're going to own the tower.
And we're going to lease it from them?
We're actually, we're not going to be in a lease situation. What's going to happen is, is that we are going to end up picking up the regulatory fees for building the tower, permitting and that kind of thing. We're going to provide them with a generator. In exchange, we're going to get basically free rent on that tower going forward.
So why do we need $4 million?
Well...
That would be for the upgrade of the radio equipment that is happening outside of the tower moving.
You know, can I just say something? And Commissioner Herbst can corroborate. I just conferred with him. You know, the only reason why we built the police station where it is today is because we were told that we owned that tower and we didn't want to spend the money to move it. And to do so would be a tremendous amount of expense and so that it would make more sense for us to just build the police station where it is now. We had to pay another 1 point something million to buy an additional piece of property to be able to accommodate the, the site, the, the design that was presented to us. And it delayed it another year because... proceedings in order to secure it. And now all of a sudden, we're being told, we don't own it, we're just renting it. And now if we want to move with the state, we've got to upgrade it. So what's going on here? Why can't the commission ever be told the truth about what's really happening?
And that's what we're working on doing right now. And again, the equipment upgrade is outside of the movement of the towers. Staff would be recommending that this equipment get upgraded, even if we were staying at the same location. So, but they'll, they'll go into it and let you know what the issues are as far as the existing radio system. So I'll let, let them finish and then we'll be happy to answer all the questions.
I want to, I want to echo what the mayor said though, because, you know, when we were doing site planning for the police station, as the mayor said, you know, we, we came down to this whole thing that we had to use eminent domain to acquire the multifamily property on the end, which took us years, you know, added $40 million to the cost of the station on top of paying double the market value for the land because as I recall from the attorney's office, it was costing us $500,000 every month while we were pursuing the eminent domain. Apparently, we didn't need to do any of that. We just needed to get rid of the radio tower and site our building on our existing land where all we had over there was the parks admin office.
Don't disagree.
Wow. Okay.
So this is, this costs us tens of millions of dollars?
Tens, $50 million all in probably by the time you figure it out in four years.
Because of the delay in construction time?
It's a delay in construction, the eminent domain, the costs associated with that, yeah, all, all the above.
I have a headache. Okay. Aside from, who else uses that tower? I mean, other municipalities too, or is it just...
It's, previously, we had the United States Secret Service on there. They moved out last month. So it's, it's us and the state of Florida at this point.
Do we, do we need to do it that way? Do we have to go through the state for that tower or not?
The, the advantage of doing it this way is we're not developing our own tower. They're picking up the lion's share of the cost to do the, to develop the new site for us. That's, that's really the advantage.
What total cost for that site, if you'd like?
I would estimate it's about $4 million to build that tower.
And what's the ask here, $4 million from us to upgrade?
No, that's two separate issues.
Yeah, so the one issue is the tower and it's been moving to the state site. We could stay at our own site, but there's a lot of advantages of moving it to the state tower, especially if they're making it available to us at no cost going forward. But again, the conversation here is the upgrade of the radio equipment and Jason will get into that.
You mean the technology upgrade?
Correct. So not the tower per se, the equipment that's on it.
And they can't kick us off?
Of the existing tower now.
No, no, the, the future tower.
Yeah, if we get into that MOU, that's, that's cut and dry. That's, that's spelled out that we're, we're there. So anyway, the, the radio system that we have now is a three-site system. It's, it's known as a simulcast system, which means that it broadcasts the same transmissions and the same messages the, at the same time. There's a central piece of technology in this thing called a control point. And if that piece of equipment was not there, we would have interference. The system would interfere with itself. This equipment dates back to 2015. And at this point, that equipment is obsolete. It has not been in production for a few years. And we're going to have an issue going forward with supporting it if we don't look at replacing it. The other thing that we're dealing with is, is that we're dealing with some coverage issues. We're having radio coverage problems on the south end of the Barrier Island and we're also having some coverage issues in the southwest suburbs of the city. The, the reason for this is because our antenna system dates back to 1992. That's the design. And as we can look out the window, we see that Fort Lauderdale in 2024, in terms of density, building density, looks a lot different than it did in 1992.
But not, not the southwest region? That's never really changed.
Well, it's, that the design has, clearly has got some holes in it. And historically, we're not really sure how great it was even back then.
So is this going to be able to compensate for that?
That's the, that's the idea. We want to go through and look at the, the system holistically and replace what needs to be replaced and come up with a better overall design. We're also contemplating adding a fourth site to help us with coverage on the south end of the beach.
Okay. Another site with another tower?
No, that would be a building top, a rooftop.
How much would that cost?
It's about $55,000 a year for rent.
So, question, the technology we have now, 2015, you indicated it was 2015. So does this type of technology have like a 10-year lifespan or does it, with the new one going forward, what are we looking towards?
It's approximately 10 to 15 years.
It just seems weird that we bought it in 20, when did you say, 2017?
2015.
2015, and then five years later, it's obsolete.
I can't speak to that. That's the vendors' decisions to, to have their, their strategy to, to make sales.
Okay.
Like, well, yeah.
Jason, do you have the, the map with the...
Yeah, so this is the...
Yeah, there's a little bit more.
So this is the, the current coverage map. The areas that are, that purplish blue, we have good radio coverage in. And then the areas that are not purplish blue, we're having issues with radio coverage. So in the interim, what we've done to kind of address the situation, because obviously we want our users to have coverage, is we've instituted a, a technology called Smart Connect, which allows the police officers' radios to connect to the radio system via the Wi-Fi cloud that's in their vehicles. So we have managed to stopgap the issue using that technology. But going forward, we would prefer to obviously have adequate coverage on our own radio network.
What's the black line represent?
That is the approximate boundaries of the city.
So it covers most of, except for a couple of streets? It looks like it covers most of the boundaries of the city, correct?
Correct. But again, I, I would point to the, the, the south end of the Barrier Island as being, as being quite an issue.
And also, also a little further west to that?
Yes, sir.
Which would be Harbor Beach area? Is, that's right outside the port there too. That line over there is State Road 84, I believe, Dean. That's troubling because that's a very sensitive area, especially near the port. That's... So what are you going to do, some make this sort of, sort of handheld device?
The, the, the plan is to, is to actually reevaluate the entire system and to do an RFP process and to come up with a, a solution.
I mean, you would think, I mean, rather overstate it than understate. I mean, it's best, it's best to go past the Fort Lauderdale boundary. You know, we don't want to have the same situation that happened in Parkland when we couldn't communicate with local officers, you know, the, the county couldn't communicate with the city and, you know, we don't want there to be any lapse in coverage. If there's an emergency, let's say at the airport, which is really where this is close to, that we don't have any communication with some, something happening at the airport. You know, there's gotta be some comfort level here that we're, we're still able to cover.
So there's, there's, there's a few nuances here. First of all, the license that we have from the Federal Communications Commission restricts the amount of coverage that we can have outside of the city.
Okay.
And in situations like at the airport, we would rely on the Broward County system for that because we would most likely be working with them directly.
And this though depicts what our current coverage is, not what it would be under a, a new system. And I think, did you have a, a graphic of that or no? It just, it would correct that?
This is what we have.
You know, right now, Jason described what we're doing to work around those gaps, but a new system would cover that.
But I mean, even the northwest.
Yes, a new system would cover that.
Yes. Because again, we're going to, we're going to redesign the antenna design. The system is, has a very directional radiation pattern, which is, I don't want to get too far into the weeds on that with you guys, but it's, it's basically...
It's not going to be rabbit ears, is that what you're saying?
Well, that's what it looks like now.
And Jason, right now, you have those three points. The idea would be to add an additional one?
Correct.
And maybe reposition those.
Correct. So, and that, that's part of the RFP is to allow the vendors or the respondents the ability to, to move the sites and, and accommodate for, for better coverage.
Okay. That upper left corner, is that the FXC is up there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Just for clarity, with the new system, the goal is to cover 100%.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Any, any other questions?
Did we have any more slides or was that the end?
That's it.
Yep.
So, you know, right now, they're working on an RFP. And why don't you talk about what we think timelines would be as far as that goes?
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
One other question, I'm sorry. I may have missed this when it was shared. The proposed location, exactly where is that? Is that near the old or the juvenile?
Yes.
Yeah, but I can't see, I see the dot, but I can't determine where it is exactly.
It's right in front of the...
It's effectively just to the southwest of the front of the building. There's some grass area over there. That's where they're planning on putting it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And so next steps is MOU with the state regarding the tower. And keep in mind that this will, is about two years out when we look at the process of an RFP and award and move it, and movement. So the state's building their new tower, this equipment, once we have a contract for it, it's probably two years from now. So the existing tower stays there with the existing equipment during that period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. Come back. BSO is a block away. What do they do with their towers and all? They have any...
I'm sorry.
BSO headquarters is a block away from... From the proposed new site. What do they do for their tower and their communication?
They have a, at the headquarters, they, I'm sorry, at the headquarters, they have a very short tower which serves just that building.
Oh, that's, so that's something totally different?
Yes.
And their, and their antenna will not interfere with any of the communications with this antenna?
They will not.
They won't jam each other?
No.
The state did several line of sight studies. They even, I think, sent up a drone at one point because they were getting an erratic signal, but they were able to identify this location as safe to place a tower for communication purposes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, B5, business five, the very controversial discussion, rescheduling city commission meetings for 2025. I didn't see that many overlaps with, with holidays.
There was one that I had wanted to discuss. Let me get to the calendar, I'm sorry. I, I'm specifically looking at January, the, the January 21 meeting.
Is that next to Martin Luther King's celebration holiday?
Yes, yes, yes. I was hoping that we could consider moving it to the Wednesday. I do have travel that I'm planning for there and I want to be, if it's not a inconvenience for everyone, well, I'm just going to be out.
That's fine. There's no reason why we can't do that. So you want a January 22nd?
Let me get to the calendar. Whatever the Wednesday is instead of the...
That would be January 22nd?
Yes.
Okay. All righty, any other, any other comments or suggestions? Okay, everything else, it doesn't seem to be, I know in December, I guess that's the week of Hanukkah, but it's just, it's the third day. There's no problem with that, right? Okay. All right. Okay. Sound good, Susan?
It's good with you, it's good with us.
Okay, very good. Do you folks want to take a 10-minute break before we go into commission reports?
One more thing with that, with the schedule, I mean, things come up, we always have the opportunity to adjust, right? We just have to give like a public notice ahead of time, right, Tom? Okay.
Yeah. Let's just take a 10-minute break. Yeah. Let's just take a 10-minute break. Yeah. Let's just take a 10-minute break.
Meeting. Where's Commissioner Herbst? There he is. Nope. Commissioner Herbst, you're gonna start. Commissioner Herbst, are you gonna start? I'm sure. So we'll start with our commission reports and we'll begin with District One, Commissioner Herbst.
I have nothing, thank you.
We'll go back to conferring with staff.
That was easy.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
I know that Commissioner Sternman has a long presentation I was gonna...
Well, I was gonna save the best for last.
You're gonna save the best for last, okay. All right. Let's see, which word do I wanna start? Okay.
What a beautiful day. This is Fort Lauderdale.
This is Fort Lauderdale.
Isn't that gorgeous?
It is, it is. Just turn around and see how gorgeous it is. Sharing that on August 22nd, I was, I met with Fort Lauderdale Captain Jenkins. We spoke about activities that are going on in the district. That's a weekly meeting that I have with him and it's always informative. I appreciate our PD and all that they do. Also, on that very day, had a Zoom meeting with our chief and some of the other police officers and command in the city regarding a group violence intervention organization. We had great presentations regarding that. Also... One second here. On Sunday, August 25th through Tuesday, August 27th, I had the pleasure of traveling up to Orlando to partake in the Affordable Housing Conference along with our city staff, Avis Wilkerson and Rachel Williams and a couple of other of the staff that traveled with us. Moving forward, I would love to go into more details about the conference and some great initiatives that were shared. And I know with the Affordable Housing Committee that I sit on, we'll go into that a little bit more. But it was a great opportunity, great information that was shared. And just reminding us that, as I said in part of our discussion, we can't talk about addressing homelessness situation without including affordable housing as a part of that conversation as well. Also, I wanted to... Sure, okay, I'm not gonna go from here, I'm gonna go to the next one I wanted to talk about. I have a question regarding the proclamations that we issued through the city. Knowing that at current date, our proclamation, they say from the city of the mayor, and it doesn't give any reference to other commissioners who may have initiated, requested those proclamations. And my concerns with that, you know, the advocacy and the service that is being, I'm speaking for myself, that I've done, it doesn't validate what I've been doing. And I would like to see an opportunity where we make a change to add a statement inspired by or requested by to that proclamation. Because we know that, I would even say, two weeks from now, someone reads a proclamation, it only appears that it was issued by the mayor.
We can put a line in there, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yes.
As requested by whichever commissioner requested it. I think that makes a lot of sense because it shows that it did originate from someone other than just, it comes from the mayor's office.
Right.
But originates as a request of one of the commissioners. I think the county does that too, if I'm not mistaken. The county has a line as requested by, so...
And then that also gives, makes it, I almost said official, I don't wanna use that word, but it indicates the history of how we document what actually is occurring. So with that, that accuracy of recording our history and how we are doing business in the city with our proclamations.
Okay.
So that's a yes, we can talk about that, we can have that done.
I think we can add, certainly, absolutely, we should add a line to it, yeah.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
That's it, okay, great. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to commend the Chamber and the Downtown Business Council for putting on a really excellent program on Thursday, August 22nd, that I participated in. And I just thought they did a great job telling the story of what's been happening in our downtown, which is truly a remarkable, a remarkable story. Monday, August 26th, I had the pleasure of visiting a new business in the district, nine-round kickboxing. And yes, I did, Commissioner Beasley Pittman, I did participate in the kickboxing.
You won?
Well, actually, I boxed with myself, so that was okay. So I guess I did win. But yeah, that was a lot of fun. Nice little place. It's really amazing to me sometimes when you see all these little businesses, the small businesses that are so important to our city, and the variety of them. So I always try to visit as many as possible and it's always an interesting experience. Monday, August 27th, had the pleasure of attending the South Middle River Civic Association. Friday, August 30th, a wonderful ribbon cutting on La Solas Boulevard. Josh Tipton is a great artist, who's very important in our arts community. I had the pleasure of meeting him at a Thrive Arts District event months back. He just opened up his third, this is his third location. The others in Delray Beach and Wynwood, and this is called The Collective. And he had an amazing turnout. This location right across from the Brito Gallery actually is representing more than 90 artists, artisans, retailers in that collective. So kudos to him. He had an amazing turnout on last Friday. And I just wanted to say congratulations and all the best to him over at 811 East La Solas Boulevard. Saturday, August 31st, where else would you be on Labor Day weekend but at the AFL-CIO Labor Ball? So again, congratulations to the County AFL-CIO and all of the hardworking men and women who serve every day in Broward County, doing the work that makes our county basically succeed on a daily basis. So that was a really nice event. Upcoming tomorrow, Wednesday, September 4th, I wanted to say thank you to Victoria Park Civic Association. They'll be holding a candidate's night for District Two and also mayor and state representative. Unfortunately, it's at the exact same time as our One Way Pair Study, which is right next door in Holiday Park Social Center. That's at 6:30, but there's always so many things going on in one night. But they are going to have that at 5:30 at St. Anthony's for the candidate forum. And then 6:30, I believe, is at the Holiday Park Social Center for the city's One Way Pair Study Public Participation Meeting. Thursday, September 5th, at 4 o'clock, the long-awaited ribbon cutting for the Marina Village. I drive by almost every single day. It's really a beautiful, beautiful venue. I can't remember how many kiosks there are, maybe seven or eight, with a variety of restaurants. And then also the Shorely. The Shorely is the ferry that they've totally renovated from Fisher Island. It looks spectacular. I think it's going to be a really, really special place. I think it's going to be very, very popular. This is basically Phase One of that reimagination of the Bahia Mar Peninsula. So that's 4 o'clock for the ribbon cutting this Thursday. Friday, September 6th, I'll be participating at Northside Elementary School, one of my favorite elementary schools, actually one of my favorite schools because of the fact that they are housed in a 1920s structure. You don't find many elementary schools in Broward County housed in a 1920s Mediterranean revival structure. And it's just a very special place. So I'll be doing that with the police, with the FOP, and I'm looking forward to that. We're gonna be doing some supply giveaways. Basically, after school has started now for a few weeks, they have identified some things that the kids could really use, and I'm looking forward to that as well. So we'll be doing that on Friday. Coming up also, Wednesday, September 10th, I wanted to thank the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations for holding the District Two and mayoral debate on Wednesday, September 10th. Now, I do know that there is another debate happening that evening, but I, hearing that this one is getting a lot more buzz than the presidential debate. So I'm really looking forward to that. Actually, we will be able to leave, the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations debate starts a lot earlier, I think at 6 o'clock. So hopefully, we'll be out for the 9 o'clock. But I do hear that the level of interest in the local is just as high. Thursday, September 11th, of course, we will be gathering for the city's, the 9/11 memorial at the Historic Fire and Safety Museum in Historic Sailboat Bend. That evening also is the Sailboat Bend Civic Association meeting, basically same neighborhood. And then I wanted to congratulate the Broward Sierra Group, that's from the Sierra Club, holding their annual award dinner on Saturday, September 14th. And that's it for me, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Sternman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to remember, was there anything that I was going to mention at my commission report, I don't remember. Well, a couple of quick things. Number one, before I begin, I just want to thank everybody who attended our workshop on the budget, Laura and your staff, thank you for joining us, very informative and got a lot of good input from my community. Let's talk about homeless. I want to get started with, we've been taking this very seriously, we've been working very hard with our partners, particularly Lamar Fisher, I did meet with Nan Rich more than one occasion. And what we have, if, where did David go? Oh, David is gonna share some, have you shared with them yet or not, David? Okay, we have a couple of things that I am gonna share with you, three things. Number one, we do have an outline of a proposal of how to go forward. I have an executive summary of what we've done. And we've developed a comprehensive plan, if you will, a white paper on what to do...
Who's "we"?
My staff, my staff. We've spoken to Lamar on a lot of these issues, I've worked with Chris Cooper. I've, we've developed a plan. Since then, we've, and Chris, I will have you come up in a few minutes, but you could sit for a bit. And some of the things going back and forth, what isn't done. I am gonna just read a brief thing about our comprehensive plan. But the big take home is, I'd like us to have a, either a workshop or a conference at our next Tuesday meeting to go over a lot of the things that I'm gonna be presenting here. We, as a commission, have to come up with a consensus. You know, you're saying we're working in a bubble, you're reading about it in the newspaper. Now, now is the time to bring it forward, and this is something that I want us as a commission to talk about and address this. And also, I did want to, one misconception that's out there, that, oh my goodness, parking, parking, parking. There's a whole comprehensive plan that we're gonna be working with, and that's one little tiny piece, it was a proposal, and it became sexy and interesting, and the newspaper grabbed a hold of it, like, oh, this is our whole plan. No, there's a whole plan going forward. Now, on August of this year, during the commission conference meeting, I reported that I had been in collaboration with members of Broward County Commission, Broward Health, city staff, area stakeholders, to devise a strategic and comprehensive regional response to the anti-camping bill that was recently passed by the Florida Legislature. In October, beginning of October, the bill prohibits Florida cities and counties from allowing people to sleep in public places and allows for counties to create homeless camps if sheltered or reach capacity. In addition, beginning in January of 2025, the law will allow residents, local business owners, and the state attorney general to file a lawsuit to stop any city or county from allowing the homeless to camp or sleep on public property. While the state legislator has not provided guidance or funding for municipalities, they've created an urgency to collaborate with our community partners working with the homeless population to significantly address this issue in our city. This is our opportunity to raise the challenge. In other words, this is a problem that's ongoing, but we could take lemons and make lemonade. This is a good opportunity to actually start working diligently with our partners on homelessness. I've outlined key recommendations to respond to the bill and are in alignment with our top priorities of homelessness and housing accessibility. There's no one-size-fits-all solution, I want to repeat that. It's not one-size-fits-all solution. As serving our homeless population is very complex, cost prohibitive, and we have limited resources. However, there are a variety of programs and initiatives we can implement or duplicate quickly that will benefit our most vulnerable population when complying with the requirements. Some recommendations have already been implemented, others are still in concept or development. Some recommendations may or might not be feasible in homeless, but they are suggestions and opportunities to explore. Every one of you should have gotten right now our little flow sheet. Some of the things on the flow sheet have already been accomplished.
Is this the flow sheet?
That's the flow sheet, the colored one. I have the executive summary. The final comprehensive white paper is still in draft form, we hope to have it by today. It's gonna probably be another day or two, we're working with Chris and his staff, I'll have him come up in a minute. I'm gonna talk to Susan, some of the ideas that we've come through, and I'd like to get that to the rest of the commission in the next couple of days, we could go over some of the ideas. And that way, my big thing is, I think I want to put this on the agenda for our next meeting, so we could discuss this in a little bit greater detail. Some last-minute thoughts, like I mentioned, I've shared this with Chris and we've been working together. I want to thank you, Chris, for taking the initiative and some of the great, great thoughts that we have going forward. I've shared this with Lamar, my counterpart in the county commission, and we will be discussing this one-on-one prior to next Tuesday. Some ideas were done, some are proposed. Like John has says, at this point, everything has to be on the table. And I think Susan, if you want to talk about the immediate alternative to jailing people, using Ashbrit to set up something for homeless people, so that, we don't want to jail people, but there is other alternatives that we are exploring to comply with the law. I'll start with, I'll start with Chris, if you just want to make a few comments about some of the things that we spoke about.
So, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner. So, some of the things that we've talked about are things that we've had some discussions about here as well. So, things like potential safe parking programs, partnerships with existing agencies in terms of finding shelter access. Commissioner Sternman mentioned working with Ashbrit, which is our disaster response firm. They also have services where they can set up shelter-type services, respite centers, things like that, that could potentially provide us with some respite centers for those affected by the House bill. And the idea that, you know, we could look at our hotel program. So all these are kind of in-the-moment things that we're looking at, that we'd eventually want to bring back to you for some guidance and thought on what we should move forward with and what we shouldn't move forward with. But those are the, the real pressing issues are finding shelter space for folks affected by the legislation to provide additional shelter services for those individuals.
I will have you, I'll bring it back to Susan in one moment, but when you do get the final comprehensive white paper, some of the things that we identified, number one, again, talking to Lamar, divide this up into short-term, midterm, and long-term. To add housing shelter beds is gonna take a while, it's gonna take a while to build them, to find locations. There are things that we could do in the short term that Susan's gonna talk about, just to get us through that hump. And some of these are not intended to be permanent solutions until more shelter beds are put in place. Number two...
Where are you reading from, by the way?
No, no, you don't have that.
Oh, okay.
No, you have the executive summary.
No, I think, I think David just gave us what you're referencing, this white paper.
No, 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 that's not the, that's just the summary.
No, we have two documents.
Commissioner, Jerry sent it over to me.
We have two documents and...
Oh, she did?
Yeah. I think we have it.
Oh, you did, I did not realize that they were gonna share that today. But that's a draft form, we could give you a final copy. Identifying safe parking, identifying locations for low-barrier shelters, self-storage, I think, Dean, you mentioned that, that's gonna be something that, you know, people that don't want to go to shelters because of storage issues, we could eliminate some of those problems. Medical respite, talking to Broward Health, that's the term that they're using for that. I know Charlie, I hate to call Charlie, but he did say reunifying people with vouchers, you know, getting that, expanding that program, designing homeless-to-work programs. And the big thing is that not-in-my-backyard mentality, this is not something intended to be a Fort Lauderdale-only problem, as Lamar and I talk every time we meet, some of these programs might be pilot programs with the full intention that this should be replicated by every municipality, a county-wide issue, not only city land, looking at county property, and it's not a Fort Lauderdale issue, it's a county-wide thing that we're just, we're taking the lead on. One last thing, if Susan, you want to talk about your thought on the Ashbrit?
Certainly, thank you. And keep in mind that staff will vet any and all ideas that come our way. And I think about a week ago, Ashbrit set up a meeting with Chris to talk to them, because they have some experience. Obviously, we know post-April 2023, in short order, those cooling centers that they were able to set up in very short order. They have some experience either at the border or working with other communities to set up homeless situations. In this case, we would look to it not to be a shelter, but to be more of what we're talking about is overnight respite. So the, our law says, hey, you can't camp overnight on public property. This would provide a small number of beds where we have an option of bringing people so they won't be in violation of... In that case, I mean, we're not talking hundreds of beds, we're talking, Chris, what were we kind of bantering about?
So we're kicking around 20 to 30. Salvation Army currently has about 30 beds in their overnight respite center, and the idea behind it is that, you know, we're going down this path with our ordinance, there may or may not be opportunities to work with the sheriff and his department in terms of holding somebody for community court. But if we had an overnight respite center that our outreach team could, could provide to somebody and wait there for their community court to get into that housing program or whatever program might be appropriate, that may be an alternative to the jail system.
But where are you going to locate these?
That's the million-dollar question, so...
I think these are all great conversation pieces, but I don't know if we've, if, I'll wait till you finish, Commissioner.
Okay, so, yeah, think about this, and I applaud Susan for this idea. We're not talking a 30, 60, 90-day shelter, we're talking, somebody gets cited and you're gonna take them to jail, the jail won't take them, you have to do something, and this will hold them, I mean, maximum, their thought was what, in five days, until they could go to community court. It solves, I mean, look, Dean, nobody, you could look through here and you could say there's, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do the storage, you can't do the parking, you can't do the shelter, you can't do the voucher.
The storage is easy.
But you go on and on and on and on, and you could find fault with every idea we come down, and then we're stuck with nothing. I think, not that I'm married to anything on there, but I'm throwing everything out and some will stick, some won't, then nothing's perfect. But I'm gonna give you an example. I'm not, no, I'm not gonna say who, but one of my counterparts on the county commission, I've spoken to a few, is not thrilled with having people sleeping in cars like you do. Like, again, you voiced that concern. But there are single, there are married couples, and there are children sleeping in cars. And it's, oh, we gotta put them in a shelter, they're not there yet, this is better than they have, it's a temporary thing, but better than they have now. I'm not saying that, you know, anything that we could do that could help people that are out there, that's an improvement, we've done something. And I think we gotta look at every opportunity we have, we might shoot it down, but let's put it out there, evaluate that, I'm bringing it to the commission at this point, we'll discuss it in two weeks. And I've thrown everything out there, I think we should at least look at it, not shoot it down right from the start. Okay. And that, I think, Susan, did I, I didn't mean to cut you off, are you, anything, anything more you want to add?
No, bugger, like I said, every idea is a good idea, and we will vet them all.
Right. And...
And I personally think all, I just, you know, skimming through this, you know, these are all great topics of discussion, and, you know, certainly, you know, I think every possibility should be explored. But, you know, I don't know where, if this has taken us any closer to a solution, but I do think that, you know, we, again, it all comes down to what we discussed earlier this afternoon. And, you know, we all think we have the best solution or a series of solutions, but, you know, there's always gonna be someone who's gonna, who's gonna point out that they, you know, the drawbacks. And, you know, even, even in the 80s, when they had Tent City in downtown Fort Lauderdale, I thought that... thought that was shameful, that we had that big tent downtown right next to City Hall, and homeless people were there. Really, Ted? I mean, remember that? That was awful. That was inhumane. But that was considered a solution back then, and it went on for months, you know, until we finally built the homeless assistance center. You know?
And Mayor, what you're saying, you're indicating a starting point with what's being suggested in our conversations. We all have to remember, we have to start.
We have to start somewhere, exactly.
And then you tweak it, and you correct it, and you make it better.
So, where can we start, Commissioner?
Well, yeah, okay. What I think is, you sort of take a look at that. Look at what I sent. I mean, you're not, look, it's not fair for me to give that to you and say, oh, yes, this is good, that's not good. You need to digest it, look at it, go over some of the ideas we had. This is a starting point for our next discussion. There's nothing going to be voted on today, no, no, don't shoot anything down today or say, listen, alternative. Look at what we have.
100%. I agree with you 100%. I think, you know, let's take the time, this is just handed to us, so let us take the time between now and the next meeting and to go over it, talk to our neighbors, talk to our stakeholders, and just see if we could come up with some, as you say, Pam, you know, we got to start somewhere.
And this is not just me, this is our partners. I mean, we've united Way, Salvation Army, Broward Health, Lamar, the Business Community Education. We have, we spent several months starting this process and might have handed you as a culmination of an awful lot of work that went into this. So, I mean, look at it, and we'll come back in two weeks and go over it.
One of the things I'm not seeing here, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the discharge proceedings at the jail. In my conversation with Mayor Rich, she even brought it up herself, saying, you know, it's absolutely wrong for Fort Lauderdale to have to sustain the burden of persons being booked at the county jail when they didn't start in Fort Lauderdale.
Well, one of the thoughts that, you know, in our conversations were, whatever municipality they came from, when they were booked, they would be brought back to that municipality.
Right. Is that in your way?
I didn't get it, it's not, it's a little, I mean, that's some of the things that we could talk about next. I don't know if that's in there per se, but that was one of the thoughts that we had come up with, too.
Okay. Okay, very good.
So, Mayor, just one last thought on that, because you brought up the hack. And, you know, I think everybody would agree that the hack was a huge, huge improvement over the original Tent City that we had there. And the reason that the hack works so well is because it's a very structured environment. So, to the earlier conversation where we were talking about the tiny homes up at the stockade, if we were to be talking about something similar to the hack, say, call it Hack Two, you know, again, where it's a very structured environment, where there's a lot of controls over, because if you look at the neighborhood around the hack, you know, it's not overwhelmed with the population on a daily basis. So, they're not coming out of the hack and just taking over the neighborhood. Because we have seen this in District Three with Salvation Army. I know.
Well, we've seen it in District One with regard to the church that has...
And District One up on 30th Place, where they have just terrorized my neighborhood up there. So, we have seen this in places where we have an unstructured environment, and that was always my concern. If you remember the earlier times when we talked about utilizing the stockade, the one thing I've always emphasized is that there's a need to ensure that the homeless population that may be housed there voluntarily doesn't then come out and take over power line and commercial power line and Cypress Creek, you know, as points for, you know, sort of, I'll call institutionalized panhandling at those locations.
So, what I had envisioned, if we, you know, if we were going to continue that conversation, was that as we manage the property, that anyone that chooses to leave the property would be escorted by a circuit or somebody taking them to a specific place. No one would be allowed to meander through the neighborhood because that would be, that would run across purposes to the whole point of what we're trying to do here. So, you know, the whole idea is management, making sure that people have a place where they're going to as they're looking to leave the premises. We offer them a ride to wherever they need to go because it would be a terrible imposition on this around the area. And in fact, I'm talking with the folks at Cavalry Chapel, who are now taking over Hope South Florida, to discuss that exact same dynamic, you know, homeless folks that are invited there for meals and clothing and whatever else that goes on there, that before they leave, that they be escorted in some place where they can, wherever they're going to be taken from that point, hopefully to a place where they're sheltered. But management is going to be 99% of any solution. We have to make sure that they are managed, that we keep up the premises in habitable condition, and that all the services that we need to have connected to individual, to the individuals that participate in these programs are available to them. And I think that's the key to the solution as we're moving forward in this project.
Absolutely. And what we saw with our second, because we've had more than one Tent City, our second Tent City in front of the library, which the county, you know, I'll use this term very loosely, managed, you know, became a drug-infested blight on our downtown. So, we, again, to your point, it needs to be managed, it needs to be very, very structured in order for this to work for both the clients as well as for the neighbors, whether they be the commercial neighbors or residential neighbors, whatever it is, needs to be very, very structured.
Okay, here's a thought.
Go ahead.
You don't do anything, and a Tent City will pop up by default if we don't decide what to do with people. I mean, people are going to live, but let's, just touching upon, again, three phases. The middle phase is the big thing, getting more shelter beds. And Salvation Army and the county were working on these projects that you've heard, but these could take months to a couple of years. And the long-term solution is something that's going to be, Pam, that is, that we have empowered Pam to deal with, pallet homes, you know, affordable housing, at-risk people. I mean, Pam represents us exquisitely well, she deals very well with Nan Rich on the county level. Apparently, Nan says that they have a great relationship. This is the short-term things, you know, while they're building more shelter beds, while they're gearing up, what do we do in the short term to comply with this law? And a lot of these things are going to have to be addressed now, until we do get the more shelter beds.
I think you're absolutely right, Warren. I think it's tomorrow, it's intermediate, and it's long-term. So, I think you're spot on with that.
Isn't the food pantry building an affordable housing project? Or they have, didn't we participate?
Pantry Lofts?
Yeah. Is that what it's called?
I think so.
It's called Lofts on Sixth, I think they renamed it.
Yes, we have an agenda item for that this evening.
Correct. They have a 9% tax credit from the state. They're very fortunate, and we're fortunate that they got that tax credit, but they are building an affordable development. Same developer that did Seventh on Seventh, which is attached to the central hack.
Right. Which, by the way, is very successful.
That's why I bring it up. I bring it up because I want folks to be reminded that we continue to try our best to partner with private interests to bring affordable housing to our community, despite those who feel we're not doing it.
And I want you to know that the hack and then Seventh on Seventh, which Chris just mentioned now, we had a tremendous amount of neighborhood input. That's Progresso Village in District Two. Everyone came to the table on that. It was a real collaborative effort and lots of partners at every level of government. It's an amazing place with a lot of wraparound services for people who are either just about to go into a homelessness situation or just coming out of a homelessness situation. It's a really wonderful building. If you haven't seen it, I would recommend you go, and you see all of the services that are provided there. I think it could be a model. I think there's more we can do with, you know, with hotels, not necessarily in our city, but maybe close to our city, or if they are in our city, not downtown. But I think there's just so much that we can do specifically. But I also want to ask you a question, because I've been getting mixed messages about the stockade. A few meetings ago, I know Commissioner Herbst was adamant that, don't bring up the stockade, but at the last commission meeting, I thought I heard that, or did I hear correctly, or did I hear incorrectly, where we are with using that facility?
Sure.
Do you want me to answer, or Dean?
Well, I think that was kind of directed towards me as to my opinion on that. So, happy to answer the question, Vice Mayor. So, as I've said before, and I will reiterate it, I think the stockade in its current configuration would be a workable solution. Because, again, it is a very secure, very structured environment. If we're talking about scraping that site and creating a village of tiny homes, then that's a much larger conversation that I want to have. I don't want to go down that path until we've socialized that idea a lot further because if you've got a tiny home village, people are going to be walking in and walking off that site all day, every day. Whereas with the stockade, again, it's a lot more controlled. So, it comes down to what the mayor just says, is how we manage that facility. It's not that I'm objecting to, it's within the existing facility, then yes, I'm good with it. Again, safe, structured environment. Because, just so everybody remembers, I have a, basically an amusement park sitting right next to that. So, extreme karting sits immediately adjacent to that facility. I have kids up there all the time. That is a child-friendly, activated environment. So, if we're going to be moving tons of homeless people up to that area, I want to be really clear that we're doing it in a way that provides for the safety of children. Because, remember, the state statute specifically says, specifically says, we have to consider the safety of children in the placement of homeless camps. So, if I have children engaged in activity immediately adjacent, contiguous to that property, I want to make sure that they're in a safe environment.
No, understood. Thank you for the clarification. And Susan, also, when, I don't know when they meet again, but, you know, we do have a homelessness advisory committee, don't we? I think maybe if you could share Commissioner Sturman's work with them as well, when you're vetting it with staff, that would probably be helpful.
No, me and the chairman, chairwoman and I have to speak on a regular basis.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Just a comment. Commissioner Glassman, I appreciate what you shared about the success with Seven on Seven and Pantry on Sixth, Sixth Street, rather. That collaboration piece, the success that you had with those stakeholders and the others who came to the table, could we invite them to be a part? To, let's span it throughout the city. Because if we already have a pool of individuals and organizations who are willing to work to help us get beyond this, let's invite them back to the table so we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Without a doubt.
Yeah, so Commissioner, if I could, part of what I've been doing over the last month or so, and what I'm continuing to do in the next several weeks, is to meet with those partners. So, Broward Partnership, Salvation Army, Task Force, you know, any group, you know, Catholic charities, whoever is out there that's providing some sort of service, understand what they do now and what they may be willing to do and partner with us on. So, those are conversations, and we'll bring you back whatever we find out from those conversations that we need to consider as well.
And, oh, sorry, go ahead.
One other thing, you mentioned Catholic services and the Salvation Army. Like, in different areas, different cities that they're working in, are we gleaming for what they're doing in those cities as well? Because Catholic service, I know in Las Vegas, how they're running their opportunities for addressing homelessness is very unique, and it could be something brought here, I believe, that will make a tremendous impact.
Yeah, so interestingly enough, this Friday, I'll be in Tampa touring the Catholic charities site, which is very similar to what Commissioner Herbst mentioned in terms of the stockade-type situation that was turned into a pallet home-type shelter facility. So, I'm going to learn about their success, how they manage it, what they learned, what's good, what's not, you know, and gain from their experiences, essentially. So, we are.
And then, Chris, just to dovetail on what Commissioner Beasley-Pitman just said about going back to those stakeholders. If I remember correctly, the Seven on Seventh project, not just those nonprofits, they were not the only ones involved, but we had a lot of input and funding from the state, the county. We did as well. We gave some generous, you know, variances on the site, and we also contributed to the landscaping, things like that, for the streetscape. But money flowed from a lot of different agencies, from the state on down, on that project. So, I mean, that's a good model for us to try and replicate.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
And I have a lot of faith in the direction we're going in. Let's be the example, let's be that spark that's going to encourage the rest of the county to do something. There comes a point, like we've been saying this whole discussion, if we are the recipients of the homeless population, it is in our lap. So, if it's in our lap, let's make the proper adjustments and protocols and policies where people can say, hey, this is what we need to do in our city.
And that being just a Fort Lauderdale location, it really cannot, and we can't make it, we can't make the rest of the county, including all of the other municipalities and the county itself, think that, okay, you know, this is just a Fort Lauderdale situation. And we cannot shoulder all of these facilities. We cannot do all of the work. As the mayor said, we're already leading when it comes to affordable housing projects because we know that that's a crisis, and we will continue to do more. But we have to figure out a way to get all of these other municipalities participating, especially when folks are brought to us from other municipalities in Broward County.
Agreed.
We have to find a way to make sure that everyone has a responsibility here, and we are not going to shoulder that burden, whether it's out at, you know, La Carte, whether it's in any park. We're not going to do any of that. But we have to make sure that this is something that is evenly distributed throughout the county and not, not just focused on Fort Lauderdale.
Agreed. And with that, and I'm going to stop talking from there, Broward League of Cities, we will take advantage of that opportunity to present to them, I'll get with Chris, and what we have gathered. We'll bring them before those mayors and the other representatives for, what is it, 31 municipalities? So, we can get their attention. Sometime, we just need to make it clear that, hey, this is the starting point, but we cannot bear this alone. We have to have the input and the cooperation of the countywide.
Cannot and should not.
Chris, anything that we've discussed or from the proposal that we went through that you wanted, that I might have left out, you want to highlight?
Yeah, so I would just say, you know, we've taken some big steps in terms of compliance with House Bill 1365. We've come to terms, more or less, with an ordinance that you'll consider over your next two meetings, which puts us compliant with the law, at least in that regard. We're continuing to look at, again, in the context of that law, you know, where we can provide some sort of respite for folks that are affected, that either we don't want to send to jail or can't send to jail, or they're not willing to take advantage of another service. So, whether that's us standing up some sort of respite facility, partnering with some agencies out there that already have respite facilities, and try to have them squeeze out some more room in their facilities, hotel vouchers, I mean, there's a number of options that we could bring back to you in terms of how we can achieve that once we have that information available. I think, long-term, to continue to work to the continuum of care, we went to the meeting last week, there was a lot of talk about 1365. There was also a lot of talk from Broward Health about folks coming out of the hospital and giving them some medical respite facilities, similar to what Memorial Health does for the Salvation Army. So, short-term, that's the plan. We'll give a presentation as well next meeting on neighbor support, and what we've done with community court and the outreach team and task force, so you get an idea of where we are with that. And then, long-term, again, we're going to have to look at those partnerships. You know, we've been reaching out to everybody, cities, the county agencies, to try to build on those and see what we can do and what everybody's willing to do to participate. But I think, again, the continuum of care is a great place, the Broward League of Cities is another great place, and that's where those dollars flow through and where things can be allocated to address some of these issues.
And we appreciate all the work you're doing on this. Thank you, Chris. Okay, does that conclude your remarks, Commissioner Sturman?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
I just have a few things I would like to add to the mix. Since our last meeting, Commissioner Beasley-Pitman and I attended the senior symposium at the YMCA, which was a great turnout, was a wonderful opportunity for people in our community to know about services, health-related, all kinds of, even job-related, for people who still want to feel active and purposeful in our community. So, that was really a great event that took place on the 23rd. On the 27th, I participated in Dr. Elizabeth King's Heidi Davis Scholarship Award Ceremony at the Pelican Grand. For those of you who might remember, Heidi Davis, wonderful, the general manager of the Pelican Grand Hotel for many years, and Dr. Elizabeth King's suits, stilettos, and lipstick organization has sponsored a scholarship program, and that was a great event to have participated in. On the 28th, at the Savers Cinema, we saw the theme rollout event for the Winterfest Boat Parade. It's going to focus on aquatic themes, fish, seahorses, all those things.
Mermaids?
Yes.
Mermaids?
Mermaids, mermen, yes. So, anyway, that was a great turnout, wonderful, and thank you, Lisa Scott Fowens, for your continued leadership on that, and Bill Walker as Chair of the Board. Thank you so much for your continued commitment to that event. And it will take place this year, rain or shine. I also attended a public arts forum that was held also at the YMCA that our own Josh Carden organized. Thank you, Josh, for putting that together. It was a panel discussion of local artists talking about how to stimulate more interest in art and appreciation for art, and how to ignite interest in the avenue of the arts, what kinds of things we can do to turn that street into its namesake, which is all about art. They talked a lot about muralists and some of the great murals we've started to see around our city. So it was really a wonderful thing, and it was attended by a good number of people. I, too, attended the Labor Ball at the Diplomat Hotel. I'm hopeful that the Convention Center Hotel opens up soon because so many events take place at the Diplomat because of its size. And now that the Convention Center Hotel is going to be the same size, hopefully these Broward County and statewide organizations could start scheduling their events right here at our port because it's a pain in the neck to keep going all the way down there. And, yeah, exactly. So, but anyway, it's a wonderful hotel, wonderful event, and I was very happy to be a part of that. Let's see, a couple things. I think everything else was mentioned. I'm attending September 5th, the Brazilian Independence Day event at the Tower Club. It's at 5:00 PM. Looking forward to joining in at a celebration with our Brazilian friends. September 7th, the Diamond Ball Gala. This is the BRCA Strong Event. It's an annual event. It's for people impacted by breast or gynecological cancer. It's going to be at 6:00 PM at the Westin Fort Lauderdale Beach Hotel. That, again, that's September 7th, which is this coming weekend. And then, I'd like to announce, September 11th, we will proceed to have our recognition of our 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony. That'll be at 9:00 AM, again, at the Fire Safety Museum in, that's in Sable Ben. So, again, that's September 11th, the city's 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony at 9:00 AM at the Fire Safety Museum. So that's all I have to talk about, and if there's, Madam City Manager, do you have any things you'd like to report on?
Just one report, Mayor. I was hoping to have the Dottie Mancini lease back to you today for approval. Last Thursday, we got a new draft from Broward Health. One item on it, we were able to work through. One is going to require additional negotiation. So I'm, as I'm always hopeful, that we'll have something back to you on September 17th.
Okay. Okay, so, Tom, do you have anything you want to report?
I do have to call for a special session, Sunshine Law Shade Session in Messina versus the city. There was a challenge of city's panhandling ordinance. We have a tentative settlement. That's the case we lost in the federal suit about panhandling. The plaintiffs would accept $360,000 in attorney's fees. Their claim was $646,000, reduced to 511. Settlement would be the 360, and the outside counsel has asked that we meet September 17th in a shade session.
Okay. So noted. All right, so this concludes our conference meeting. Not so fast. We're just going to remain seated. We have our first budget meeting, which is scheduled for 5:01 today, and it's 5:01.
Five oh one, geez.
I think that's the first time in history that we start.
Exactly.
I am.
Too late.
So, this begins our, it's the first of two public hearings as required by law on the city of Fort Lauderdale Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District Millage and Budget for Fiscal Year 2025. The purpose of the hearing is to receive requests and comments regarding the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District's budget and to explain the budget and any amendments thereto. The public hearing is now open. The acting city manager will now present the proposed millage rate and tentative budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District taxes the residents of this special district to provide security to their neighborhood. At their May 14th, 2024 meeting, the district voted their millage rate at 1 mil, which will generate an estimated tax collection of $201,660 to support an operating budget of $201,660. This millage rate is 5.3% more than the rollback rate of .9497 mils, and is necessary to maintain services for the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District. This concludes my report on the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District.
Okay, so this is the time for anyone in the public to speak or ask any questions about the budget. Anyone wish to speak about this? Anyone from Sunrise Key? Okay. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Moving seconded, please call the roll on closing public hearing.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. So the tentative millage rate for the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District purposes will be 1 mil, 1.000 mil, which represents an increase of 5.30% over the rollback rate of .9497 mils. Will someone please introduce the resolution adopting the tentative millage rate for the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District for Fiscal Year 2025?
Introduced.
Commissioner Herbst is introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, adopting the tentative millage rate of 1 mil to be levied by the city of Fort Lauderdale for the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. So the public hearing to adopt the final millage rate will be held at 5:01 PM on September 12, 2024, at the Broward Center for the Performing Arts, Mary Porter River View Ballroom, 201 Southwest Fifth Avenue here in Fort Lauderdale, which is right here where we're speaking. Okay, moving forward.
Mayor, we also have to adopt the resolution for the budget as well. It's two resolutions in this one.
Which is the next one, right? Budget two?
No, number seven.
Oh, number seven. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. It's a week from Thursday, so everybody knows. Okay, so now, will someone introduce a resolution adopting a tentative budget for the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District? It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, adopting the tentative budget of $201,660 for the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District for Fiscal Year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. All right, so the millage rate and the budget will be heard at 5:01 PM on September 12, 2024, at the Broward Center for the Performing Arts here at the Mary Porter Ballroom, 201 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Moving on to business two, budget two, rather. This is the first of two public hearings as required by law on the millage rates for the fiscal year 2025. The purpose of the hearing is to receive requests and comments regarding the city's millage rate and to explain any amendments thereto. The public hearing is now open, and the acting city manager will now present the tentative millage rate on which the fiscal year 2025 budget is based.
And thank you, Mayor. The fiscal year 2025 city of Fort Lauderdale tentative budget includes maintaining the current millage rate of 4.1193 and decreasing the combined debt service millage from .2737 to .2545 mils. The recommended millage rate of 4.1193 exceeds the rollback rate of 3.8408 by 7.25%. The aggregate tentative millage rate, including the Sunrise Key Dependent District, is 4.1229, which results in an increase of 7.25% above the aggregate rollback rate of 3.8443, and is premised on the following: funding increases in wages and insurances, funding key commission priorities and community investment plan projects, and maintaining healthy fund balances. Increases to the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget that require maintaining the millage at the same rate as the prior 17 years include: 12.6 million for the increase in fridge benefits, including health insurance and pension contributions; 10.5 million for the increase in salaries and wages; and 2.6 million increased insurance expenses. That concludes my report.
Taking a minute to digest what you just said. This is the time for anyone in the public to speak or ask any questions about the tentative millage rates. No one has signed up to speak. Is there anyone here wish to speak on that? Okay, there being none, someone please move to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. And the motion to close public hearing is now approved. So the recommended millage rate to be levied for all general city purposes exclusive of debt service will be 4.1193, which represents a 7.25 increase in the millage rate over the rollback rate of 3.8408 mils. The aggregate tentative millage rate, including dependent districts, is 4.1229, which results in an increase of 7.25% above the aggregate rollback rate of 3.8443 mils. The recommended millage rate for debt service for the 2015 general obligation refunding bonds is .0189. The recommended millage rate for the debt service for the 2011A general obligation bonds is .0193. The recommended millage rate for the debt service for the city's voter-approved public safety bond is .0856, and the recommended millage rate for debt service for the city's voter-approved parks bond is .1307. Will someone introduce a resolution adopting tentative millage rates for the city of Fort Lauderdale for the fiscal year 2025? Someone introduce it?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, adopting the tentative operating millage rate of 4.1193 and debt service millage rate of 0.2545 to be levied by the city of Fort Lauderdale for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. Moving on to budget three, the next item is tentative five-year community investment plan. This is the time for anyone in the public to speak or ask any questions about the tentative five-year community investment plan. No one has signed up to speak? Anyone wish to speak on this item? There being none, someone move to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, so public hearing is now closed. Will someone introduce the resolution adopting the tentative five-year community investment plan for the period beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2029? Someone please introduce the resolution.
Introduced.
Resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll.
Could we have input now, too? We've closed public hearing, could we speak about?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, this is the time, correct?
I'm sorry?
This is the time that I could, could, okay.
Yes, it's the time.
Susan, one quick thing, or maybe Laura, this was brought up in the budget hearing in our town hall. Can I just ask you one quick question? There was, there's $1 million for, basically for Riverland Road traffic calming, which is a big problem in my neighborhood. There's a school there, and, you know, it's a bigger, bigger project, but at least $1 million to get started with. And that's not going to be funded until what year?
2027, which is what it was in the last CIP as well.
Correct. Now, there are other projects that are funded, but they're not going to be getting to, like, and they brought up things such as, I mean, money that's going to go this year that's not going to be used for a year or two. One example that was brought up was, let's say, La Soul's mobility, the money's there, but they're not needing it now. Is there any way that we could expedite the funding of that particular project?
So, in order to take money from an existing project, based on the charter, the city commission has to abandon that project and remove money from it, so we can look to see if there's a project to abandon?
Well, there's no way we could do it without abandoning the project itself.
Yeah, that's typically the process. And then we could reappropriate in a future year, whatever that was, but the abandonment is what's required.
But that's going to, is that going to put that other project in jeopardy, though?
It would depend on which project that we had identified and when we expected to be expending the money. Just keeping in mind, because that's one of the projects that would be included when we made that renewed Lauderdale presentation in January, we're going to be bringing that back to the commission in the fall to see if there are any projects that we want to group together and maybe consider doing some bonding, a geo-bond perhaps, for some of the higher priority projects. But in the meantime, we can go back and see if there are any ideas that, of things that we could, it doesn't have to be a total abandonment, it could be a partial abandonment, if, you know, but we can look.
Okay, but I don't want to put that in jeopardy, but the only question is, without, again, there's no way I want to put that La Soul's capability in jeopardy, but any way that we could expedite that Riverland, if we could look into what we could do with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, any further comments from the commission? There being none. We've already voted on this, right?
No.
No, no, I.
Oh, that's right, okay. Okay, will someone introduce the resolution adopting the tentative five-year community investment plan for the period beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2029? Resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, tentatively approving and adopting a five-year community investment plan for the period beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2029, tentatively, tentatively appropriating the portion of the community investment plan for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, tentatively re-appropriating the unspent community investment plan project balances at the end of the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, and providing for severability in an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. So the public hearing to adopt the final five-year community investment plan budget will be held at 5:01 PM on September 12, 2024, at the Broward Center for the Performing Arts here in the Mary Porter River View Ballroom, 201 Southwest Fifth Avenue here in Fort Before I read the final budget item, I just want people to know that there was an adjustment to Exhibit 6 to correct a Scrivener's error. And that, do I have that, David?
I didn't print that one. That one was sent last week. Two dates were just changed. On Page 2 and Page 3, it changed from fiscal year 2024, and it was changed to fiscal year
This is on the first page?
On Pages 2 and 3 of the camp. Or, I'm sorry, of the resolution, excuse me.
Has it already been corrected in the text?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, budget four. This is the first of two public hearings as required by law on the city of Fort Lauderdale's budget for fiscal year 2025. The purpose of the hearing is to receive requests and comments regarding the city's budget and to explain the budget and any amendments thereto. The public hearing is now open, and the acting city manager will now present the tentative budget.
Thank you, Mayor. The fiscal year 2025 city of Fort Lauderdale tentative budget includes maintaining the same millage rate of 4.1193 and decreasing the annual fire assessment rate by $10 to $328 per residential unit. The tentative budget is premised on the following: funding increases in wages and insurances, funding key commission priorities and community investment plan projects, and maintaining healthy fund balance. I would now like to present you the adjustments to the fiscal year 2025 budget that have been made since the submission of the July 2, 2024, proposed budget. The following adjustments have been made to the general fund revenues: increasing revenues totaling $1,32634 to account for updated ad valorem and state revenue estimates; increase in revenues totaling $145,455 to account for updated administrative charges as well as updated estimates for the Speed Zone Camera Safety Program revenue; and increase in the appropriation of general fund balance totaling $3,144,589. Adjustments have been made to general fund expenditures, including $2,152,978 to increase the fund, increase to fund the first payment of seven for a cost-of-living adjustment for the general employee retirement system retirees. $670... retirees; six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to increase for Railroad Crossing Elimination Grant Program local match; three hundred and seventy-five thousand increase for Reconnecting Communities Grant Local Match; three hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars increase in transfer to the Community Redevelopment Agency; one hundred and eighty-four thousand three oh one increase to reflect general fund position adjustments, reorganizations, and scheduled contractual updates; one hundred thousand increased funding for the Traffic Calming Program; one hundred thousand increased funding for two weeks of paid parental leave; one hundred thousand dollar increase for the South Regional Activity Center code update; ninety-six thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars increase for twenty-four-seven lobby receptionists at the new public safety headquarters and recruitment office rent, and that would be for one month; seventy-five thousand increase for a fire rescue department public information officer vehicle; sixty-one thousand increase for enhanced nonprofit funding for the Early Learning Coalition of Broward County and the Mobile School Pantry of South Florida; forty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars increase to support rental space and audiovisual needs for city commission meetings; twenty-seven thousand four hundred increase for enhanced Riverwalk activation support; and fifteen thousand increase for Gulf Ocean art events. These revenue and expenditure adjustments result in a fiscal twenty twenty-five tentative general fund budget of four hundred and eighty-seven million eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The full changes to other funds since the submission of the fiscal twenty twenty-five proposed budget are outlined in CAM twenty-four zero six five six, exhibit two. Key changes include the parking fund budget was decreased by two million dollars. The Northwest Progressive Flagler Heights redevelopment area fund budget was increased by nine hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. The Northwest Progressive Flagler Heights CRA Business Incentives Fund budget was increased by that same nine hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. The Central City Redevelopment Area Fund budget was decreased by nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. The Central City CRA Business Incentives Fund budget was decreased by two hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. General Fund Debt Service budget was increased by ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and seven, twenty-seven dollars. The Special Obligation Utility Debt Service budget was decreased by twenty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars. The Stormwater Fund budget was decreased by twenty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars. The Sanitation Fund budget was decreased by twenty thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars, and the Sunrise Key Fund budget was increased by two thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. That concludes my report for the fiscal twenty twenty-five tentative budget.
Thank you. This is the time for anyone in the public to speak or ask any questions about the tentative budget. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone here wishing to speak? There being none, is there any, do I hear a motion to close public, public hearing? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. So the tentative total all funds budget for the city of Fort Lauderdale is one billion one hundred ninety-three million two hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. No, I'm just kidding, which will fund the various operations of the city of Fort Lauderdale for the fiscal period beginning October first, twenty twenty four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Will someone please introduce a resolution adopting the tentative budget for the city of Fort Lauderdale for the fiscal year 2025? It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, adopting and approving the tentative budget of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, which includes the budget for the general fund, water and sewer, central regional wastewater system fund, stormwater fund, community redevelopment agency fund, self-insured health benefits fund, debt service fund, sanitation fund, parking fund, building fund, central services, customer service fund, vehicle rental fund, city property and casualty insurance fund, airport fund, grants and bond fund, cemetery system fund, project management fund, arts and science district garage fund, school crossing guard fund, cemetery perpetual care fund, beach business improvement district fund, nuisance abatement fund, Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District fund, and police confiscation funds, intentively adopting and approving the City of Fort Lauderdale personnel complement for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Where did you vote? Warren?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, okay. All right. I thought I heard something.
Why, yes.
Okay, yes. So the public hearing to adopt the final budget will be held at five oh one P M. on September twelfth, twenty twenty four, at the Broward Center for the Performing Arts, Mary and Porter River View Ballroom, two oh one Southwest Fifth Avenue here in beautiful downtown Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Is there any further business regarding the budget hearing? Madam City Manager, nothing further? No one from anybody? Okay, this part of the meeting is now concluded. We do have the CRA meeting to do, so please call the, the roll for the CRA board meeting.
Commissioner Herbst? Vice Chair Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Here.
Chair Trentalles?
Yes, I'm here. So M one, motion approving minutes for the August twentieth, twenty twenty four Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting. Someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Chair Trentalles?
Yes, and the motion approving the minutes is now approved. Moving on to resolutions. This is R one, resolution approving the budget amendment, reappropriate eighty-three thousand dollars for lighting for the northeast Fourth Avenue Streetscape Project. Someone like to introduce the resolution? Someone like, it's introduced. Does anyone have any questions with regard to this resolution?
Actually, Mayor, I did. I don't know who the, who's here that I could just answer some of those questions. Thank you.
It would be.
Milos?
Milos.
Thank you. So, Milos, thank you. And I did, I received some emails about this and just questions. And if you could just explain exactly why we're doing this and why this cost and why it wasn't part of the original million dollars, and if you could just clarify for some of that, because I did receive some questions about it by email.
Absolutely, my pleasure. Milos Mistorius, Acting Director for Cities Transportation and Mobility Department. So what this budget amendment would do, it would allow us to install some lighting along this project, segment of the project. It's about eleven lights that we are to install. We did all prep work for installation of those lights. And originally, the lights were to be installed by the FPL. Unfortunately, that agreement was executed by the city. It was never executed by, by the FPL. And at this point, we're seeking private contractor to install lights for us so we can complete the project.
And just explain to me, though, why we were not able to accomplish that with that million dollars?
So my understanding is that the, the lights were always part of the second phase of the project, and they were not anticipated to install, to be installed as part of the phase one.
Okay, so you're fine with this?
We are fine with this.
Anything makes sense?
Yes. And we, as soon as the budget amendment is approved, and as soon as we issued purchase order to the contractor, we will be able to install it within about three months, which we are seeking proposals from the vendors for installation.
Okay, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Okay, any further questions with regard to this resolution? There being none. It's been introduced, so please call the roll.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency approving a budget amendment and providing for an effective date. Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Chair Trentalles?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. Is there any further business of the CRA? There being none. This meeting is concluded, and we'll have our evening meeting at six o'clock.
Oh, we have post benefits?
Yeah, we have OPEB.
My highlight of the evening. I now open the other post employment benefits board meeting. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst? Vice Chair Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Here.
Chair Trentalles?
Here. B R one, other post employment benefits trust quarterly investment report for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Does anyone have any questions with regard to this report? Do you want to make a presentation, Linda?
No presentation needed. Just wanted to tell you guys a good news story. Commissioner Herbst already highlighted it already in the investment report that we did earlier, but I just wanted to give you the numbers to put it on record. Our OPEB trust earned sixteen point one one percent year-to-date, which equated to six point two million dollars to the city. And our post-retirement step plan earned one point one million, so just wanted to put that on record. Thank you.
Did that achieve our target rate?
Our target rate was seven percent, and we earned sixteen, so we've more than doubled it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions? There being none. That's just a report. So, moving on to M one, motion approving the minutes for the July second, twenty twenty four, other post employment benefits trust board meeting. Would someone like to make the motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Chair Trentalles?
Yes, so M one is now approved. Is there any further business of the other post employment benefits board meeting? There being none. That meeting is now concluded. And now our evening meeting will start at six P M. Thank you.